We'll call for you at six o'clock PM. As you know, the mayor's out of town in DC on official city business, which is a reason for remote attendance pursuant to our city code. I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Mayor Sangitha Raiapati at the committee of the whole and city council meetings of September 27, 2022, due to employment purposes or other city business.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Walden.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Vanda Mayor, the meeting is yours.
Well, thank you so much, City Council. I'm happy to be able to make this happen. So we'll proceed with the agenda number three, our presentation, Moline 150 Sesquicentennial Post Event Report. Mr. Brecht.
Hi there, everybody. How's it going? All right. Soon as we're ready with the PowerPoint. Great. Thanks a lot. Can I change it with this data? All right. Perfect. See if I can figure it out. Well, we're finally here to talk about the end of the Moline 150. A lot of people put in a lot of work over a year on this event. I think it's fair to say that it exceeded expectations, at least in terms of turnout and smoothness of operations, to be frank. You know, Moline hasn't done something like this in over a decade. And because of great teamwork here in the city, we pulled it off and it turned out to be a really great event. And, you know, the reason we wanted to do it in the first place was kind of to come out of our pandemic shell. You know, it's been a tough couple of years. Businesses had struggled. Moline wasn't getting a lot of visitors, things like that. And so, perfect opportunity on our 150th birthday to throw a big party, to get everybody from the city to come to and, as you'll see, people from well without, from further away than Moline itself, which is really exciting. I think I hit the wrong button. What, am I doing that wrong?
The right side, the worn out one.
The worn out one.
The one that's not marked. Okay, that makes sense. All right. So, exciting attendance. You know, we were thinking on a good night, we might be able to get 10K maybe on Saturday, probably around five or so the other nights. Blew our mind away. In fact, I had to just update this presentation this week because we got the Visit Quad Cities numbers where they're actually using the Datify app to track it. And that showed we had over 40,000 people over the course of the three days. Day breakdowns are kind of estimated here. Thursday was kind of a warm-up day. We had 5,000 to 6,000. Our Mercado on Fifth takeover on Friday was amazing, 9,000 to 10,000, and they were early arriving. As you also hear a little later in this presentation, that caused a few problems in terms of crowd surge, but, you know, I think if you throw a party and you have to figure out how to accommodate people, that's a good problem to have, right? We moved our touch of truck, well, day three, I should say, 10 to 12K throughout the day. Now, that was like a 12-hour day, so it was a lot, but the night crowd was also still huge. That morning, more than 1,000 people came to our touch of truck event. And then our trolley tours that we did, that looks like a small number, 250, but again, demand exceeded supply. You know, we did it as an event bright. We weren't sure how many people would be that interested, especially in the morning on a weekday. Sold out even though they were free in 24 hours. So, in fact, there's people that want us to keep doing these trolley tours at different times, so we might be coming before you at some point to see about that. So you can see from the pictures, though, just a lot of folks and a lot of people having a good time. And as I mentioned, the trolley tours. So I kind of took a SWOT analysis approach of some of these slides, like what we did well, what we can improve on if we choose to go forward and do this again. So the good, the high demand, the thing sold out immediately, well received, the reenactors and tour guides were very much well received as well. A big shout out needs to go to the Black Box Theater and Laura Adams from Western Illinois University of WQBT. She got, very short notice, a team of actors to come and do this and be at the different historical sites. Really was fantastic. Relatively cheap, too. It was about $3,300 in terms of getting the trolleys, getting the actors, doing the whole nine yards. So bang for the buck in terms of how popular it was, I think was really good. What can we improve? The demand was higher than supply. People, we weren't expecting so many people to like it. The schedule was too tight. We sort of optimistically thought we could get a full tour. We drove it in my vehicle and it was 15 minutes and we even stopped a little bit to let people talk, but really didn't take into account kind of natural people kind of hemming and hawing and not maybe being, and some of the actors decided to ad lib quite a bit. So that was kind of exciting. Some, by the end, a couple of them were like usually 30 to 45 minutes late, kind of frustrating, but on the plus side, it was free, so they couldn't complain too much. So yeah, the schedule was a little too tight. And we may need an additional trolley. In retrospect, I think if we'd have had the two trolleys, which the company does have, and rotate them on each one going every half an hour, it would have worked out better and we would have had less of it. But again, too many people, good problem to have. Oh, in addition, we also gave out away a ton of the Downtown Moline Heritage Walking Tour books, as well as the Made in Moline books. If you haven't seen these, please take a look at them. There's a bunch at the library and here at City Hall, we have a couple boxes on them left. The walking tour is particularly cool because there's more than 80 spots in there and we even put up codes, the QR codes, in various buildings downtown. So if you walk around and you see a little QR code with that logo on it, take out the camera on your phone, radio will give you the history of the building, why it's architecturally interesting, et cetera. So people really seem to dig that. Now the performances themselves. I thought they were amazing. Really great group of bands that we had. We had excellent diversity of musical styles. You know, we had some country stuff, we had some, you know, just straight up rock and roll, we had a, you know, some folk bands, just a little bit of everything. If there's a kind of music to be found, it was on one of our two stages. So that was great. One shout out to Hive, our consultant, for the upbeat, positive messaging from the artists. I feel like every band we had seemed to have just a really good vibe to it, kept the crowds entertained, kept everything on a positive level, so I enjoyed that as well. Lots of fan enthusiasm, amazing attendance, as said. Areas where we can improve. You know, it was cool to do the two stages. We had the Q E stage where a lot of our local bands and performers perform. And then we had the main stage, which was more of our main acts. They were at opposite ends, so it was a little weird. You know, I don't think as many people kind of transitioned between the two stages as much as we thought. I think that it was kind of, you know, a lot of people go to the Bass Street Landing concerts and so they're very, get their chair and put it up and then just hunker down there for the duration. So I don't think we quite accomplished exactly what we wanted, which was a little more cross movement between the two stages. So thinking maybe you either put the two stages at the one area, or maybe you have just one stage and then have the local acts maybe go first or work in between while the main acts are getting ready. Just some details to work out there. We need house music in between acts. It was kind of weird lull, like usually if you go to a concert, some kind of music is playing the whole time. So that's kind of a minor detail, but it's something we can improve. And as noted, you know, we didn't really have a household name. We were constrained to a certain extent by our budget. Post-COVID bands are super, super expensive. So, you know, in a perfect world, it might be nice to have a band that, you know, the preponderance of everybody has heard of, but anymore in this day and age, that gets harder and harder, too, because, you know, we don't all have top 40 radio like we did when I was a kid. The merchants, this was a lot of fun, too. And, you know, part of this goes, is credit to Mercado. They've really set the standard for what this should look like, and so a lot of thanks to them for helping us out with this. Beverages sales exceeded target, and they didn't just exceed it, they destroyed it. Like, we were pretty conservative in marking that in the budget as around 25,000. We brought in almost $70,000 worth of beer sales, so they've the weather for that. And thirsty Quad Cities. Incentives helped attract Moline-based businesses. I don't know if you know this, but there was three tiers for fees. The most expensive is if you're an out-of-town, non-Moline business. It was at one rate, I want to say it was 1,200, somebody from finance can, or somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. And then if you were a Mercado business, it was even cheaper. I think it was around 500, and if you were from Moline, it was 800. We wanted to give the Mercado folks a specially good deal because we took away one of their Friday nights. They only get a certain amount per year. We asked them to come down and be part of our organ, of our event, and we thought that was the right thing to do. So I really liked the fact that we were able to make it Moline-centric, you know, that was part of celebrating Moline. Things that can improve. I don't know how much everybody likes tacos, but there are a lot of tacos. So a little more diversity, I think, in the food options out there. Again, we wanted our Mercado friends to be down there and really set the tone, and they did. So if anything, I think we just need to add stuff. I don't want to get rid of any of them I think we need to add. And long lines, especially during Mercado night. Just felt like there could have been a, I don't know if it's a way of changing how you pay things or something to be done, but kind of relieve a little bit of that congestion, especially in the middle of the walkway there. Security. So, you know, in 2022, it's critically important that we make this a safe, fun, family event where people feel comfortable. The good news is, I think for the most part, we accomplished that. You know, as always, we just had a nice after action event with PD today and discussed areas where we can improve. So go through real quickly. Zero arrests, zero 911 calls, and no major negative incidents. So that is pretty amazing when you consider there were 40,000 people in downtown Moline drinking beer for three days. So I think we can all pat ourselves on the back for that. And not just pat ourselves on the back, but give a kudos to our fine police department and fire department for keeping us all safe. Yeah, see, more than 20, it was actually even more than 40,000. Negligible conflicts. And a welcoming, positive atmosphere. I think most of you guys were down there, I see, recognize you for being down there and I don't think it's a stretch to say it was just a really positive vibe the whole time. So where can we improve? The perimeter fencing needs to be more consistent and robust. In some areas where, you know, you could just pop over the fence really easily, other areas where the terrain made it difficult to kind of secure them. You know, if this had been a ticketed event, we probably would have had about a third of the people be able to get in free if they really wanted to, so that would have been bad. Fortunately, most, since it was free, everybody seemed pretty content to come through the gates as asked. The private security company, their consistency in execution was lacking. Like everybody else, they're struggling to hire folks, probably a little bit understaffed, and they're kind of new to this business. The particular company, local company that was here, has just started providing security services within the last couple of years. So we had a nice meeting again with them today and are identifying areas they can prove. Little things like the fact they didn't all have the same uniform out. You know, that's something that is an easy fix, things that you should be able to do. And just a little bit more professionalism is something we really want to see in terms of the private security because we're just not going to have the staffing to have it fully staffed by the Moline Police Department. That's impossible. So we need a very good private sector partner here. And strengthen the entrances and improve crowd control during surges. Part of that falls on planners like myself. We didn't realize that 90% of everybody was going to park right there, kind of by the tax layer center. And so, especially on Friday night, we had, at one point, we had people backed up in line for the security all the way to the railroad track, which is obviously dangerous and not something we want, kind of getting into the road, whereas the 15th Street entrance was barely busy at all. So we did get messaging out after Friday for Saturday to say, hey, if you get to that 15th Street entrance and it's packed, please go around 12th, shouldn't be, and it seemed to be better. But a little better signage, a little better pre-event communications, better directional and parking signage, and I think we can take care of that problem as well. So overall, you know, you can't really complain about security when you have a perfectly safe event, but, you know, this is a city-run event, and so we hold ourselves to an extremely high standard on it, and, you know, we didn't meet it 100%, which is something that we aspire to. Here's what was really exciting. These are the numbers that just came in from Visit Quad Cities this week. This is the profile of where the visitors came from. You can see 40,199 total unique visitors, but what's particularly exciting to me, 8,203 came from 30 or more miles. And you can kind of see on the map here, had good, whoops, wrong way, had, whoops, wrong way. I'm going the wrong way, David. Now, how do I go backwards?
Just one flip.
Got excited. All right, Des Moines, Chicago, and St. Louis, a lot of folks came from that far away to come see our concerts, which I thought was really exciting. And when people come from far away, they spend more time and they spend more money. So you can kind of see our top markets, obviously, Moline, 20,000. We had 7,600 people from Davenport, which is pretty cool, and 6,500 of our friends from over in Rock Island. And what was, I thought was really interesting is that the slide on the right kind of shows the same weekend for the last four years in terms of visitors. It took me a second to figure out what this meant, but it's kind of cool. In 2019, on that weekend, for all the hotel stays and people visiting downtown Moline, about 13% were from out of town, 30 miles or more away. This year, it was up to 17%. And so you can see 2022 was bigger than 2021, 20, and 19 all. So what that says is that you hold this kind of an event and you're going to get a pretty dramatic increase in the number of out-of-town folks on that particular weekend, which is what it's all about in terms of having a positive economic impact from holding it Social media reactions, it's real hard to read, sorry, guys, but you can see it's overwhelmingly positive. I just wanted to throw in some of the comments. You can kind of see the spikes, kind of like when we announced things and then when it actually happened over the weekend. With the Zen City report, I think that's here, oops, the Zen City report indicated that over 90% of all interactions were positive, meaning people were saying good things about what we were doing. Less than, I think, 2% or 3% were negative and the rest were neutral. So always good when people are talking friendly and nice about you on social media and kind of rare also in this day and age, so that's a good one. Now the number you've all been waiting for, the financial report. So ended up with a total budget of around 303,000. Had to shout out to our sponsors again. This would not have happened without John Deere, without Mid-American, without Old National Bank, and even all the way down to our media partners and our small donors. We were hoping to get a DCEO grant to help fund half of this. That fell through last year. We're attempting to get it this year, but when we needed it, these folks stepped up and helped us fund our big party, which we were looking for. And I know I could not stand here next to Carol without showing the event being in the black, and we did. So event expenses were a little higher than we anticipated. We ended up hiring, as most of you know, ASL interpreters kind of at the last minute. Always some last-minute things that come up when you're doing something for the first time. But again, that beverage sales really bailed us out. Merchandise sales were solid. So we stuck to our budget and we came out with about a $5,700 in the red that we can funnel towards future events.
Black.
What did I say?
Red.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You meant black.
Yeah, I meant black. In the black. It's always good. So there you go. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I don't see any hands raised, but I have a question, Tori. Is it possible for you to pull some comparisons to other weekends during the year as you, as we debate whether to do this again, to see where there are more dead weekends, as you were mentioning, that, you know, the amount of visitors? Because I think there's a lot of factors that go into which weekend we might choose.
Yeah, no, that's a great idea. I will get with Dave Harrell from Visit Quad Cities and we can figure that out. I know there's been some discussion of maybe doing it in June. You know, we were, I think, the weekend after the Mississippi Valley Fair, which of course gets a lot of concertgoers, so that may have kept our numbers down. We might have been 50,000 maybe if it would have been in June. So no, that's a great, great point. We can look into that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anything further? Nope. Seeing none, we will move to public comment. Is there any public comment this evening?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, please come forward and announce who you are.
My name is Reverend Tyson Parks, and I'm here representing the Harrell and Parks family. Can you all hear me?
Not too well.
Barely.
I'll use my preacher's voice. My name is Reverend Tyson Parks.
There we go.
And I am here to represent the Harrell Parks family. And I, Honorable Mayor Raiapati and distinguished members of the city council, on October 31st, 2018, about 10:04 a.m., my cousin Cory Harrell Jr. was found dead in his van behind City Hall, Moline City Hall. Since that day, this homicide has been an ongoing and active case according to the Moline Police Department. Last year, the Moline Police Department announced three young men who were considered persons of interest in this homicide, and that they were still investigating it. Two of the individuals are now in federal prison on unrelated charges, and the third person of interest is still out in the community, somewhere wandering the streets. This has been an open wound for my family as I represent Cory Senior. We grew up, I grew up in Moline, was part of the Moline Boys Choir, always considered this community to be safe. I am a second-generation pastor, and Mr. Harrell and I share the same grandparents. And Mr. Harrell purchased our grandparents' home on Fourth Avenue, so he is a homeowner in Moline also. The pain that he is going through in victims' families is, it's immense. But you guys have a good track record here in Moline because you just closed a cold case in September, so imagine that, providing hope for a family that's going through such a detrimental time right now. I'm speaking as an advocate for the family, and I'm just asking you to take this into consideration. Dismissive attitude sometimes when a family is just asking questions with the police department. I'm not blasting the police department, but a little sense and sensitivity to a family that's struggling with grief and trauma, it goes a long way. It's even been insinuated that my cousin, and this is hearsay, had prompted some retaliation, which is totally unfounded and untrue. He's a grieving father. He's frustrated. The family is suffering the fallout behind this. It's devastating, and I'm just coming in as a family member, as a pastor. I've been watching from afar. I reside in Peoria. I'm very active in the community. I'm a community activist, but this hits home. No walk of life is exempt or immune to gun violence, and we have our struggles in Peoria as the rest of the nation. This happened at City Hall. Right across the street is the police department. It happened in your backyard. I love all the sentiment of moving forward, but we still have a grieving family here, and we can't forget the past. If we do, we're bound to repeat it. Mayor Raiapati, I heard you say, because I've been watching you from afar, that overarching values and ethical practices could help a community. Well, you all are elected officials. You represent the entire community, and that is so important. I'll leave you with the quote from the late, great John Wesley. Passion and prejudice govern the world only under the name of reason. It is our part by religion and reason joined to counteract them while we can. Justice is not black and white. Justice is what Cory Harrell Senior and his grandson Kane and the rest of our family is asking for. There was hope with you closing a cold case. We're just hoping that you will listen and hear us as I represent the family. This has been a devastating, a devastating blow to the family. The young man had goals and aspirations of college, and then starting in his own business, he had an entrepreneurial spirit that was all taken away. So imagine a father's pain and anguish, especially when it is your junior. It's devastating. You know, and it was also filtered in to the family that this probably could have been closed, but that particular day, the cameras outside the police station and outside the City Hall were not working. That, that's devastating. As a community, we all have to own it. We all have to own it. And so we're not placing blame, we're just asking for help, we're asking, and we're also seeking hope and justice. But more importantly, these assailants, there are two maybe incarcerated, the persons of interest, and the other one is out here roaming, and we don't know how many others were involved, but they're out here. They're going to events, they're laying their head down on a pillow with no accountability. Thank you for your time and consideration on behalf of the Harrell family. As I said, I'm Reverend Tyson Parks III, and I'm representing my cousin and family. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Excuse me, Reverend Parks. Is there any other public comment this evening?
Yes, I'm Jeff McAus. My wife owns and operates the Suzy locations here in Moline. She couldn't make it tonight, so she wanted to send me over. I guess what I'd like to talk about is back in March of this year, we passed, or you folks passed, you changed the ordinance which would allow these establishments to go on a different ratio of food and beverage versus gaming. And shortly after that, I'm looking at my phone, some of the messages, I got sometime in April, there was a change about the K licenses, and suddenly now the K licenses are going to be eliminated in January of 2027. I guess the question I have, there's 36 holders of the gaming licenses in the community. Why can't you, is there not a mechanism to reach out to us and say, hey, we're going to discuss this, you should come in and be in attendance? Because we get blindsided by all you folks when you come up with these new rules and we find out about it two weeks later. Now, I was informed by Connie that now there's another change made. Now you're going to go back to the old rule of the ratio of gaming to food, and if you don't meet that, you're going to be shoved into a K license, which is going to be shoved out the door in January of '27. So basically, you're eliminating all these small little businesses. We're involved now selling liquor down here at the former Christopher D's. It's a tough business. I mean, it's, it's difficult. And suddenly, you know, we're in here trying to make things work like other bar owners in Moline, and you folks can see it on your food and beverage tax. I mean, it's, there's not, there's not a lot of sales. People, I don't think people drink as much as they used to, or they're drinking at home. So what's happening is, we discussed this before, we're being penalized because people want to come down and go gambling, and the gambling numbers are exceeding the food and beverage numbers. So we basically, we're closing ourselves down based on what you want to pass here. Now, is that what's going on with, is that the new ordinance is going to be passed or discussed? Because maybe I'm wrong. I mean, you can fill me in. Is that what, is that what we're doing?
We don't exchange in conversation during public comment. You just state your case and we can certainly follow up with you. But tonight's discussion is chapter four, not chapter five.
Okay, all right. Well, I do want to say, too, that in all the jurisdictions that my wife operates in, I mean, we, none of those communities have come back and just keep rehashing this. This industry's been going on for 11 years in the state of Illinois. I think it's been beneficial. It's taken gaming out from the back dark corners of all these establishments, brought it up front, and it's being taxed and regulated. And I think that's what we all want. And now you're considering a dispensary, no different. I mean, we all, if we all grew up here, how many, how many people do we know that were selling marijuana on the street corners and in back alleys? Now it's coming out to the forefront and it's being taxed. I just don't get how we have to keep coming back and rehashing, and then you're setting everybody up to fail. There are many, many small little bars in the city of Moline that will close, and they've been there for 30, 40, 50 years. These people have worked really hard and they want to sell the business someday. Who's going to buy it? If they read the ordinance, they're going to say, you're going to be closed in January of '27. It's a dead business, and it's being created right here in this room. So it, everybody looks at this gambling, gambling is evil. It's not. It's, there's so many people with their hands in the money bag, living off of this, and we're the ones that are going to get penalized as the retailer. So I, it's, we don't deal with this in any other town. That's all I can say. I mean, the communities that my wife operates in, this is not happening. They're encouraging it. They've given They've given us the sixth machine. There's talk of possibly a seventh machine because the state takes more money. The city takes more money. I mean, there's only so much money in the bag and so we need to have another machine. And this isn't a bad industry. And I certainly hope the people that, I don't know if they're here with the marijuana dispensary. I mean, if they see what's going on with this, I mean, what's their future hold here? I mean, you going to change the rules on them in three or four years and say, hey, uh, the sunset could be, uh, twenty, uh, twenty twenty nine, you're closed. Who's going to invest in this community anymore? I'm sure I have other things to say. I can't think of it, but I, I'm just, uh, it's just, it's stressful. I mean, we're trying to get things off the, off the ground here in this community. It's a struggle. And I live on the Iowa side. I see the Iowa side flourishing. We don't have mandatory fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage. We don't. We pay people what they deserve. And do they deserve fifteen? I suppose if they have, you know, skills that warrant it, absolutely. But between the fifteen dollar an hour, all the taxes that are being laid on us, and now we have a sunset of that we're going to be closed. And the majority of these bars, if this passes, will be closed. I mean, I know enough of them. I talked to them. If they didn't have gaming, they'd be closed before the pandemic. It's just, that's the reality of this. And I don't think gambling should be, should be this evil thing that's in the room. The good news is if you don't want to go into these establishments, don't go. You're not required to go in there and get your license renewed or buy groceries. It's a, it's a regulated room that you don't have to go into. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Mr. McAus. Any further public comment?
Yes, yeah, another.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Romar. Uh, I've been a citizen of Moline my whole life. Um, I'm just here to can express my concern on the placement of a proposed skate park. Uh, I've been told that it's going to be down along the inter- along the new interstate bridge downtown Moline. And my concern is, is that the city of Moline is at fire the Kone Building at three point one million dollars. It's going to be a great asset to the city. Uh, my concern is, is I've been told that skate park will be quote, under the interstate. But as you come off from Iowa, coming in from the airport, it's going to be seen. I just don't think that we're going to get the investors to invest big money in that location down there. If you've got a skate park with graffiti and a lot of police calls. And I know that some cities have some really beautiful skate parks. And it is a, an attractant to, to cities for, for the youth. But if you look at the police calls at Davenport, go over there and look at the graffiti that's there and the environment, I just don't think we want that. There's other places I think you can go. Uh, I just want, just for the council at least, look at those different alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment? Okay. Excuse me, what was that? Okay, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, questions on the agenda. Any from council? Seeing none, I don't believe we have an other for our committee of the whole, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So we will move to our informationals. I will turn it over to you, Mr. Vitas, Mr. Dykheisen.
Sure. I'd like to just introduce this item and then turn it over to, to Carol to go through the, uh, the citywide large projects for council consideration for the upcoming fiscal year twenty three and beyond into twenty four and twenty five. In some cases even beyond that. Because as you know, uh, when we established the three-year budget last year and we established a three-year capital plan, capital spending plan beyond just infrastructure. It also incorporated discussion about the projects that are on the table, uh, in front of you this evening, which we will go into in some detail. Uh, we're going to be looking for, for guidance again from council. As I said last year, uh, everything is, is a moving target. It's, it's, uh, it's fluid. It's not static. It's meant to be fluid. Uh, this is an opportunity for council to provide input. So as we move forward with, uh, wrapping up the budget for presentation to council in October, late October, uh, we will have, again, address these issues, but they will have been refined based on inputs that we received from you. And, uh, and going forward from there, hopefully with budget adoption and, and at the end of October or early November. So with that, I want to turn it over to, uh, Carol Barnes and to Barry Dykheisen, uh, to take you through the documentation. I will add that you've received an updated, uh, version this evening in front of you. Uh, and the changes or revisions or explanations is really what they are, are identified in red. So with that, I will turn it over to Carol Barnes.
Yes, thank you, Bob. Before we get started here, just to give you a little bit of a background, throughout the last year, the list of projects that we're going to discuss tonight has been talked about during various times. There have been roundtable discussions going clear back towards the first of the year and especially during March, various council meetings, as well as some different staff meetings. And staff now needs clarification, um, as to council's priority on moving forward with these projects. And to, and we need help in identifying the funding sources. Many of the projects that are currently on the list that we're going to look at tonight, they do not have complete funding sources. So that's why we need council's input, um, to either figure out how we're going to fund them or upon some of them, if we need to potentially defer them another year or two out. The projects that we're going to discuss are in various stages. Some of them have actually been bid out, but now they're currently over budget largely because of inflation.
Hard to see.
Oh, yep, I'm not quite ready for that yet.
You're not ready for that yet?
No, not quite yet. Um, some of them are, are over budget, um, because of inflation. As you know, we're, we're currently at an eight point three percent, um, inflation rate. And not just the C I P projects, but overall, we're seeing bids coming in, um, over what we had originally anticipated. Some of the projects on the list are new projects and they now require a city match for grants. Again, the matching portion was never a part of, of the budgets that we had talked about. And some of the ones in the outer years, and we've segregated those out, are actually just conceptual. Um, we've talked about them with some of the Renew Moline, but we're going to go through those as well. If we should bring some of them forward or if, if we leave them where they're at. And again, some of these have also been discussed as part of the vision for the future of our downtown. So we've kicked them around over the last, you know, several years. And if there's an opportunity to bring them forward, um, that's what we'd like to talk about tonight. And so that we can get them included in the three-year budget. So to help with the discussion in front of you, as Bob mentioned, we do have a revised, uh, presentation that is, that you currently have. And the only changes in it is that on the project list, and we're going to go through it in detail, we have further clarification on the projects to help it, um, define what we're going to be talking about. We also have handouts from Renew Moline that, my understanding is you have all seen before over the last several years, projects have come forward. I know Alex had also made a presentation, um, to council probably about a year ago. And I've also included, just for reference, if we need it, the current list of our ARPA projects. So to get started, we're going to start on this page two. And David, you can go down to the, yep, to the project list. I know that's kind of hard to see. That's why we made handouts. If you can follow on the handout in front of you with the red, um, we're going to discuss that in more detail. But I'm going to actually come back to this page. I just want to note right now, if you go to the bottom, highlighted in yellow. If you look at a total of in-process projects that we've talked about, as well as projects that are still kind of in the to-be-determined area, we are looking at a total of thirty, in excess of thirty-two million dollars worth of projects. And so that is why we're here tonight, to try to discuss how we're going to fund all of these. And to start off, before we go through the list, I'd like to go through the revenues. So the next slide, David. And I'd like to basically concentrate, before I get started, on three different buckets of potential revenue. The first one being cash on hand. And I'm going to go through that in a minute, but cash on hand and unspent unrestricted ARPA funds. The next bucket would be cash on hand plus some potential bonding. And again, you're hearing about this for the first time. And we're talking about sometime during the next three years, that potentially that's an option if you're wanting to fund the projects. And then the last one would be potentially, uh, bonding. And I should say the second, that second one we just talked about with the bonding would be no levy rate increase for that twenty million dollars of bonding we're going to talk about. And then the third one would be a potential separate bond issue to help fund the fire station. And that one would require a levy rate increase. And we're going to talk about that. So there's three buckets of funding. And again, we're just looking for guidance. We're not looking for a decision today. So if you turn to page three in your handouts on the revenues, the first one I'd like to go through is our available cash on hand. And as we look at the bottom, before I go through it, available cash on hand, we've got thirteen million, four hundred thousand of cash. Again, the projects that we just saw, the total, over thirty-two million. So our cash on hand cannot handle all of the projects that we're going to talk about tonight. But our cash on hand, we do have annual home rule sales tax that will be available from bonds retiring. After a long period of time with bonding, we're going to have an additional one point five million dollars from debt dropping off in two thousand and twenty-three. Historically, those funds have been used to fund C I P projects. And occasionally, council has approved to use some of the home rule to issue bonds for special projects. We've done it with the pool and the police, uh, police department, um, building, as well as some of the library remodel. So on occasion, that has been done. Primarily, it has been used for C I P projects. The next funding source, as you have heard, we're very fortunate, um, here over the last couple of years, even with COVID, we were able to accumulate a total of about four point four million dollars projected over our fund balance policy in the general fund. So we've got the one and a half home rule plus the four point four million in general fund reserves. In addition with cash on hand, and the reason I bring up this next bucket is unrestricted ARPA funds that are available and not yet spent. As we go through the project list tonight, since these funds have not yet been spent, as you know, the unrestricted can be mixed and matched and used for any type of project the council will desire. It absolutely was earmarked for the projects listed below. We had I seventy-four property acquisition and beautification for two million, road repair and improvements for two point five million. And we talked about it a couple of weeks ago to potentially use a part of that for the Seventh Avenue, uh, match for the grant. Our one-stop shop, again, very high priority project, um, but we haven't started on that. And those funds are available in the unrestricted category. In addition, we've got, uh, a million dollars in ARPA funds for the reduced flooding infrastructure projects. Um, again, if that project doesn't go forward, that potentially could be available cash that we could spend on something else. So as we total that, that is a thirteen million, four hundred thousand dollars in cash reserves that is available today, mixed and matched. And I may point out as well, um, as you know, the council had a contingency in the general fund for spending for special projects that come out through the year. You had budgeted four hundred and forty thousand. And to date, you've only spent right about twenty-five thousand. And that was used for the Zen City software, as well as for boarding up the McKinley schools, leaving an ounce, a balance of unspent money of about four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So depending on what happens the rest of the year, we could potentially have an additional four hundred and fifteen thousand. Any questions on the cash in the bank, available cash reserves? If we take a look then at the next option for revenue, if you look at the bottom half of this next page, starting with the general fund, the four point four million, everything is exactly the same. We talked about the unrestricted ARPA funds, the four point four million in the general fund reserves. But now instead of having the one point five million dollars in cash from home rule every single year, staff would like consideration, since there's such a large project list, to consider leveraging that one and a half million dollars. We could issue up to twenty million dollars to help offset these project costs. Again, that's a big decision to be made. What we had calculated here, we're twenty years of bonds at four point two percent interest. If we were to scale that back, you know, we could go with any and or all amounts. It's roughly, um, if you scaled it back to fifteen years, it would be about fifteen million. If it was ten years, it just happens with the interest rates, it calculates that way. Ten years would be about ten million dollars. So you can kind of play with where those totals would fall. To start our discussion, what we've done is that this thirty-two million dollars, thirty-two million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand matches that highlighted project list that we'd like to go through now with you. We're not saying to bond, but we're saying this is an option for all the projects that have been on the table. So does everybody kind of understand where we're coming from with the discussion now in front of us? That we have limited revenue sources for a significant, a proposal of projects for you. Okay? All right? So what I'd like to do, we've got, as you know, we've got David here, we've got Alex in the back, we've got Eric from Parks, we've got Ryan, you know, Bob and, and Barry and I. As we go through this list, we want it to be an open discussion. We want you to have an understanding of what these projects are. Again, we're not asking for a decision, but we're kind of wanting a nod. Is this something we're going to want to move forward with? And if so, when we come back in the, during the budget on that large Saturday discussion, we want to come back to you with a three-year cash flow plan, being able to fund the projects that you want to fund. And then we will have a discussion on that Saturday and then hopefully we can finalize those projects. But we need direction tonight, if I should be pursuing, looking at bonding, fine tuning it and, and whatnot. So it's, it's a direction that we're looking for tonight. Yes.
So you, you, you mentioned that, um, for the new fire station, we would have to, it would require a levy increase. Is that, could it also be part of this? Like, could we swap out projects and?
Yes. Yeah, it's going to be a mix and match. And we're going to talk about the fire station too, when I get at the bottom of the project list. But absolutely, everything is open. Um, it is council's priorities here. And I, I humbly say, we are here to help you accomplish the priorities that you want to complete.
Carol, I, I understand your, uh, your line of thinking for this conversation, which is absolutely fine. I just want to state at the outset, however, that twenty years of bonding, it, please confirm for me, that ties the hands of multiple councils for years to come, correct?
It would limit the potential of bonding. The next available revenue streams that we are aware of would be bonds dropping off. I'm sorry, I have that, I don't have it on top of my head, would be in two thousand and thirty-one, which is another nine years out. We would then have another one point two million dollars dropping off, which would be additional home rule sales tax that's available.
So there would potentially be other options for future councils, but it really would restrict what they could do?
Yes.
Thank you.
I can answer that. If you, if your intention is, is to maintain your, your, your bonded ceiling, your bonded debt ceiling, which is what Carol's referring to, this is what's available. You don't bind future councils' hands. Future councils could dis- Future councils could decide for themselves whether they want to adhere to the current practice or the past practice or change that practice in future years, you know, when none of us are actually sitting here. But that's a decision for future councils.
And I might say too, with growing communities, you know, it is not unusual to issue bonds. You know, to leverage your, the money that's available, get some big, knock a couple of huge, big projects out. And then it makes a significant difference.
Okay, I'm just, you can see where my mind is headed, especially given the fact that, you know, I wanted to, and we did, this council did go with a sort of medium range commitment to the bonding we've done for the pool. Right? As opposed to the longer term that was originally proposed. So we have a track record of, of doing that, I just want to point that out.
Yes.
I see a hand, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I have some concerns about tying the hands. That when the utility tax was originally put in, there was a portion that was, I think 60% was supposed to go to CIP. And at the time, the idea was, we need to catch up on our roads. And we need to fix our roads, and we need to get our roads better. Unfortunately, through the, the process, councils over years took this advice and said, oh, well, we're not going to do the roads, we're just use that as debt service on other CIP projects like other heavy lifting things. And I know over the last seven years I've been on council, roads is one of the biggest things that we hear about. Now, I think we've got some real issues on capacity because we get a number of these things getting pushed out. But that needs to be one of our major concerns as we're talking about this. And remember, you know, just because we have this bonding capacity, every dollar that's spent on it are dollars that aren't going towards fixing our roads. And so I, I think at some level, it might make sense, depending on if it is a priority that needs to be done now. But to blow the whole thing, uh, and I, I think is a huge mistake.
Okay, so we'll, we'll let you get to your, to your, what you wanted to do, Carol. But I did see Mr. Waldron's hand go up. I, I just, I don't want to get us too far afield of the list that you want to go through.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I appreciate the list, and I think what we're going to have to do is make some hard decisions tonight. And I think the first decision that needs to make is the one we just started with, is the bonding. If there's not an interest here in this council to bond, like Carol has presented, I think we need to tell her that upfront, because then that makes these decisions coming on these 24 items that we're going to take. We're going to have to toss some, put some in, move them around. But if we're not interested in bonding, I think we need to say that upfront and then make the hard decisions on that list of 24. And so that would be my recommendation. That saying, I am not interested in bonding whatsoever.
Okay, so could we get a sense of who, of that interest in bonding at all or some? Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, I, I am definitely not interested in bonding to full capacity. That, I think, is not where we want to be because it ties our hands when future needs and projects come through. And I think we need to allow ourselves that level of flexibility as well as that commitment to our road projects. I think that we likely will need to bond for something. We are dealing with a lot of deferred maintenance projects as well as how we can, you know, and if we were to bond, I think we'd be leveraging some of that into more CIP type products and the, the roads we need to address and the larger projects that are kind of showing up. So those are some of my thoughts. I don't know what exact level I'd be comfortable at, but I know it's not going to be that top threshold.
Mr. O'Brien?
I would like to hear the finance director, you know, she just won a big award a couple of weeks ago. I'd kind of like to hear what she has to say about it before I make a decision on bonding. So I'm, I'm going to wait till she's done with her presentation.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to weigh in right now though on bonding comfort? Mr. Went?
Yeah, I, I'll, I guess I'll throw in my two cents. I'm not necessarily absolutely no bonding, but I, I sure as heck wouldn't want to go anything over than 5 million. You know, four or five million so that it is a short timeframe that is, is a limited scope. And that would only be if it was really a crucial, absolute, important project. I mean, we, over the last seven years, worked really hard to pay down debt so that we would have additional funds so we could get to the, the six miles of road as, as they kept saying. But, and I think that that is still where the residents want us to be. I mean, some of these things are, are nice, but they are not needed.
Okay, Ms. Barnes, we'll turn it over to you to go through the list.
Okay. No, I appreciate the input, and again, we started out with the highest option. If you bonded to the max, that you could pay for it, absolutely consideration everywhere up and down. So no, we are here to help you get the funding for the projects you're wanting. Okay, with that, we're just going to start at the very top of the project list. And David, you can put the project list up, please. It's the very, it's on page two. And again, if you want to follow along with your, the ones that have our red notes. And the first one is, is the I-74 corridor riverfront property acquisition. This was originally budgeted at 2 million from ARPA funds. And as you know, we just agreed to purchase that Heritage Church for the 3.1 million. And we are estimating, we don't have an absolute dollar amount yet, but we anticipate that it could cost upwards of 1.9 million to demo that property. So 5 million is the total amount for that. Again, we only had 2 million originally budgeted, so there'd be a 3 million gap right now.
Feedback, oh yes, Mr. Went?
Uh, so, you know, I, I was in favor, I, I still think we should have gotten this property for a lower price tag. But that controlling the, the riverfront from the bridge all the way down to the rowing club, I, I think was a generational decision, and so I am, I'm in favor of that. However, if you look down further down here, we've got a 250,000 for a I-74 corridor downtown, downtown master plan, which I think is something we need to do. But along those lines, we should not be spending 2 million in demoing a building until we have a master plan, plan in place. There's a number of things on here that seeing what our financial situation is, that we need to defer and wait until we get a master plan in place to make a determination. You know, for instance, you know, you've got that big old brick warehouse that's, that's next to the tower. You know, it may be something our master plan may turn into the city museum like down in St. Louis, and that may be part of our thing. And so, you know, oh my God, why did we just demo something? So I, I, to, to, to my thinking on this line, that should be 3.1, or I think it should be less for acquisition, but that's a, a different issue. But the demolition is not something that needs to be on the table now. There's tenants in there, there's revenue coming in. Until we figure out what we're going to do down there. So I, so I think that that should be amended down just to the acquisition.
Is there anyone else to weigh in on that?
I could, I could weigh in on that, is that allowed?
Yeah, yes, please, Mr. Vitas.
I, I feel I have to weigh in on some of these because, I mean, there's a lot going on here, and there's a lot of discussions daily on this list. This list is not just, shows up once a year and then we talk about it. It's, we're working this list constantly. And Alderman Went is spot on. I mean, the 1.9 demo figure is an estimate, and it is a place marker, and it is not cast in stone whatsoever. I mean, we acquired the building at 3.1, and we sit on that building while the master planning process takes place because there was nothing ever done by ULI, or anyone for that matter, to plan that seven acre site, which is really the centerpiece of all the properties that we will assemble. So as the master planning process unfolds, it will reveal, you know, do we keep a portion of the building? Do we keep any of the building? We don't know, and that's actually a decision that council will have to make at the right time, given a master planning process that will involve citizen and community input, just like doing a comprehensive plan. You'll have the opportunity to get that feedback because it's really critical, you know, and we'll, and we can work with Renew Moline because they love this project site. And this is something they're very committed to. But we can actually come back with the plans. And for 3.1, you know, when we officially close on the property, you know, that's the limit of what we're expending right now. It's the master plan that I've been talking about since the very beginning, when this property wasn't even on the table at that time, that needs to be done. And that includes master planning all of the IDOT parcels, which are scattered up and down on both sides of I-74, leading us to have not seven acres, but probably, I don't know, Alex, what would you say? 20? 15 at least? Yeah, there's, there's a significant amount of property. So, you know, I, I just wanted to put that out there so that council's aware of it.
So if I'm tracking the comments so far, it would stand, and if, if this council was in agreement with where we're headed in terms of master planning and preservation of, of those pieces, of, of those parcels, then we need to say that number 13, IDOT, I-74 IDOT excess parcels should stay in the important must-keep expenditures? Would, would that be what council would be thinking, or no? Mr. O'Brien, I see thumbs up. All right, Carol, move us on to the next item. Oh, we have another comment, Mr. Went?
I, I think the other part of the equation that we need to discuss is the TIFs. You've got TIF 13 that comes down and plunges down into this area, but doesn't incorporate the full area. We've got TIF number 13, which is projected to have a surplus of not, I know it's speculative, it's a pro forma, but 9.1 million or so over its lifetime. That was in the TIF report that was done in September. And so we really need to, and this is going to come up when we talk about the fire station as well, is we need to talk about how that interacts with this park, how it interacts with other development down there, and how it might interact with the acquisition of, of this site. If we want to change the boundaries, we, we had a meeting a while back about the possible changing of the boundaries of, of TIF 13 to include like the dispatch building and, and different things, and that really hasn't gone anywhere. But now that we have that entire area, is the idea that TIF 13 takes over the whole thing? Or is there an adjacent TIF? Is it a TIF that's project specific? But there is that 9.1 million from that, there's some other funds from the CO-NA TIF. I think there's 1.7 million. And we need to really take that stuff into consideration. I know that the money's not ready today, but as many places do, you can, you can borrow against the future income from those, those TIFs. The interest is TIF eligible. And so we need to take those, those things into consideration, and none of that is, is on this, this document. And so just keep that in the back of your mind because there, there are other funds available if we are creative and quite honestly, if we change that policy that we can't transfer money between TIFs, which is, was insane, but.
And I might add to that, yes, some of these are TIF eligible. But if we use up our cash reserves, that 13.4, the 4.4 million out of the general fund brings us down to our fund balance policy. So we don't have additional funds if, if we use the 4.4 million.
That's 25%, not the 20, 25%.
Yes, it's, that is correct, so there's a little, yes. But we don't have the cash to cash flow some of those out till 30 and 32.
But you can take a loan on those.
You can, but you still have to pay that debt service on that, and that would be from the general fund until those increments are, are available.
So, so I think, to keep us on track, we've identified a TIF discussion as important part of this. I think if we go back to this list, what, what's bubbling up in, to my ears is for us to look at the other items on this list that are in that redevelopment zone. So for example, number 20, the Spiegel Building. Is it fair to say that this council wants to keep that item in, for consideration for big projects that need funding? Mr. Went?
Um, I, I, I think this is another one where until we have our plan in place, I mean, I appreciate, I've been in favor of, of when this was the only piece of the puzzle we had moving forward with the Center of the Arts and, and those sorts of things. But the playing board is completely different now. Us having that entire area down there, we need a master plan because it may fit in perfectly, it may not, it may need to be someplace else. And so that would be another one where I would say, I'm in favor of it, I think philosophically, but we need to have that master plan to make sure if it makes sense within the whole plan.
Mr. Williams, and then Mr. Waldron?
Following that line of thinking, I feel the same way about 15 skate park and the pump track. I hate to see that be the first thing developed down there and have it influence everything else without a master plan. Agreeing with Alderman Waldron, the way we had the old skate track up at Browning. Can't be for that, I just think it's going to be an absolute disaster and not the best use, especially not in that area. Maybe somewhere else, but not when we're trying to develop that as the jewel in the crown of Moline, to have that skateboard park and all the problems that show up unintended, not with the vast majority of the people that use it. But it definitely is something I don't think we need to push out first before we even develop that without a master plan.
Okay, so there's one other, one or two other items, Ms. Barnes, that are sort of fall into this, like must be in the master plan basket to move forward, it sounds like, unless council disagrees. But the Milltown Basin, number 18, and the Collector Center. And please, council chime in if you see other things that might fit under this basket of things we're talking about. I'm sorry, do I see a hand? Oh, Mr. Waldron, you were going to speak, yes.
I have a question, reference number 20. Didn't we approve through Renew not too long ago, a request for funding for a feasibility study already to figure out what was going to go in there? Is this an additional request to that?
Alex, could you answer, please?
Alexandra Elias, Renew Moline, this is not in addition to. The numbers that are referenced in here came out of a memo that I wrote last year that was intended to be sort of a placeholder, here are some things to think about. That particular one was incorporated in the whole. But you're right, there's a $30,000 study that's currently underway, Renew's paying for half. That study will be done in October. Was that helpful, Alderman?
So in that question, you don't need, well, whoever requested, we don't need a million because 30,000 of it has already been carved out. That was my only question, thank you.
The 30, the 30,000 was the study.
And my understanding from Alex's memo was that the remainder was potential incentive money for future developers so that there was cash on hand for those.
Thank you for that clarity.
Just discussion only.
Mr. Went?
Yeah, I, I, to your question, I think you asked earlier that we didn't really kind of work through very much. I think the acquisition is needed, that we can control as many of these pieces of property as, as possible. When they're coming from IDOT, we're going to presumably get the best price for them as well, and then we'll, we'll work through it. But the, the comment regarding the Collector Center, I, I guess I don't view that as the I-74 corridor. So I'm not necessarily certain that we should put it in that bucket. Now, it obviously can be influenced by things that happen a few blocks away, but Now, it obviously can be influenced by things that happen a few blocks away, but I don't think that parking lot is going to wind up, if we're asking for a master plan from somebody, they're not going to master plan this whole acreage back up and forth and then jump three blocks and say, oh, in this spot, you got to do something, so I view it as different.
Yes, can I get a sense from the council on the Collector Center project and its relevance to remaining a focus of our priorities? You want the Collector Center to remain, I couldn't tell, that was a thumbs up?
Well, thumbs down.
Well, that it's not part of the delay because of waiting for a master plan, is all I'm saying.
Okay, but I would like to pull everyone to see where you are at with keeping it as a project we actually want to look at at the moment.
Standalone project, a standalone project, Mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah, keep it as standalone.
Okay, I'm seeing, okay, I'm hearing the council saying, keep it as a standalone, just not under the basket of I-74 redevelopment, okay. Is that helpful, Ms. Barnes?
Yes, it is.
Okay, now I will turn it back to you, that I think, unless I've missed one, please see if there's another basket we can identify, or standalones.
No, and this is very helpful, I appreciate the open discussion on this. I'm just going to go to number two, the Seventh Avenue reconstruction. As you know, we received a $3 million grant that we were very, very excited about. That total project is $8.7 million, and it does require a $5.7 million city match. That was never on the council's, in our original three-year plan. We talked about utilizing some money, $2.5 million out of ARPA a couple of years ago, but that still leaves a gap of $3.2 million as we head into that project, and it is going to be over a four- or five-year construction period, but we do need guidance on how to match that grant.
Yes, Mr. Went?
Yeah, I've been an advocate, because I think how we built as part of the bridge project, Seventh is a monstrosity. It is not safe for anybody to cross, it is a poorly designed road and intersections. That being said, and I hate even the idea of saying, okay, we got this grant, but we're not going to take it, $5.7 million would go a long way in other roads getting fixed in Moline. That concrete is in great shape, it, we don't have any problems with it and those sorts of things, while we've got people who are running over potholes left and right and losing their struts. I, from my standpoint, I know that this is not a great thing to do, but I mean, with the list of the things that we have in here, for me, that's not one of the top priorities, that money can be utilized better other places.
Mr. Schmidt, and then Mr. Timmy.
What is, what is our timeframe as far as needing to initiate that before we would forfeit the grant?
And David, maybe you can help with this, I think we have a five-year period to spend the funds. I believe the first dollars going out will be more towards the 24-year, 24 and 25, with some carryover in 26. David has also been doing some preliminary engineering, and this does not include potential contingency, is that correct, David?
Correct.
So we haven't completely shored up those dollars on the project. Again, we were just, this just came to us over the last few weeks, but again, it's a dollar amount we need to address.
Mr. Timmy, and then Mr. Waldron.
Thank you, Your Honor, I think Carol just answered this, but we don't need to find a 3.2 at once, it can be over a period of time, if this were, if this is stretched over three years or whatnot, this isn't a lump sum.
Yeah, the 2.5, we kind of earmarked from ARPA, if the council does agree with utilizing that, because it was for roads identified anyway. The other 3.2 may not be needed closer to the 25, 26 year, and David, I know, was also working at, we're out of the three-year CIP, 26 goes into it, but we may have to, if there's no other resource identified, almost having to defer, am I correct, at least $3.2 million of projects in that year 26, in order to accommodate that. So we just want to make sure we're in sync as we move forward.
Mr. Waldron?
I respect Alderman Went's opinion, but I couldn't disagree more. This is the sort of project, first of all, you're getting money here, and this is, like he mentioned, it's very difficult to turn down, but this is the exact sort of thing that I personally think the ARPA fund should go towards, roads. And if we let that bond expire, we have a million and a half each year, should go back into roads, two years of that is 3 million, we have the money right there in either 25 and 26. I think this project should go ahead.
Can I get a sense of how many think it should go ahead?
Can I state one other thing?
Yes, Mr. Went?
I understand where you're coming from, but to go to our residents and say, we're tearing up perfectly good concrete that was most, a lot of it was poured in the last couple of years, while they're driving down roads that are terrible, I have a real problem. And I, it's a tough call, I mean, without question, but the number of roads that could be done with that money in the interim, I just can't support it.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, I just would like some staff input on the need of the project, what we're gaining from doing this work compared to the other, balancing against other work.
Yes, actually, if we could ask staff, I think Mr. Dreyer or Mr. Veeloke, you were at the fourth ward meeting, some of this came up there, and we did have a resident talk about the terrible switching of lanes at that spot. Can someone come to the mic and talk about what those benefits to this project were that were discussed at the fourth ward meeting?
Well, I wasn't at the fourth ward meeting, so Ryan will have. There are segments of the avenue that are in rough shape that could benefit from some reconstruction. The intersections are old, maybe an opportunity for us to do some undergrounding of the few utilities that are out there, and there's an awful lot of pavement, so there's some opportunities for streetscaping and re-tasking those. Is it the worst street in the city of Moline? I wouldn't say it is, but it could benefit from some improvements.
Mr. Veeloke, can you follow up? I know there were discussions about the walkability, the people that live on the other side, et cetera.
Yeah, so at the fourth ward meeting, there were a couple of comments, one of the things that stood out was people who are coming off this, going southbound on I-74, getting off right there at that interchange, having to cross several lanes of traffic in very quick succession, so you know, part of this whole project will be kind of redesigning and reevaluating that area. Pedestrian connectivity is also a huge part of it. With the expansion, or with the replacement of the bridge, several streets in that area had to be closed, and so there, part of that, you know, eliminated some pedestrian connectivity for that neighborhood, so this is a very valuable project, really for the quality of life for those folks that, you know, kind of had some impacts placed upon them due to the construction of the bridge, so.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. DeKaisen?
I was just going to remind the council that the city has received the pavement condition report, and David is filtering through all that data now, and so I just wanted to remind the council that that's out there, as far as informing your street decision-making.
And that was going to be...
Thank you, Mr. Went?
Yeah, and that was going to be my question, was, you had mentioned it's not the worst, but it's, you know, is, can we get from you guys what it is, or do we have enough of that data yet? So like, where would this even fall on the condition rating compared to the rest of the city? And if it comes in near the top, then I'll change my tune, but I would be shocked if that's the case.
Thank you. I think you got a sense, Ms. Barnes, of the council's priority there? Is there another question I missed? Oh, Mr. Messias, sorry.
Yes, how frequently do we get these sort of grants for streets like this? How frequently do we get the opportunity to tap into $3 million to redo a street?
Not very often.
The answer is infrequently, infrequently.
Yeah, I would hate for us, you know, five, 10 years from now, to look back and regret taking advantage of those $3 million, and then if we do decide to move forward, what will the price be then? It could be a whole lot more, so I just hate leaving some grand dollars out there, that's my take on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
You can just tell the people that we didn't get it right the first time, we have to redo it to make sure it gets through. It'll get done right this time, we promise.
All right, thank you. I think we can move to three, four, and five related to the pool, Ms. Barnes?
Yes, and before we get there, I might just have you guys keep a running tally with me.
I am.
Okay, because I'm starting with the cash basis now, knowing that maybe there's interest in doing some bonding, but we were starting with 13.8 million of cash, that includes the first 1.5 million of home rule, then we're going to add another $3 million, 1.5 for 24, 1.5 for 25 of home rule sales tax, which brings us to 16.8 total. And if that Seventh Street project goes into 26, we can add another million and a half, but it's in that range of between 17 and 18 million in cash through 2026, if we add that fourth year of home rule sales tax, just to keep a tally. Okay, the next project is the pool, Your Honor, and I'm going to introduce it, if we have questions, I know Eric is here, but the pool base bid is currently 200, or $323,000 over the budgeted projection, very similar to our CIP projects in infrastructure with the inflation, what we had originally projected to be when we issued bonds a year ago, we're in a different, totally indifferent environment right now. The base bid on the pool totaled $6.8 million. If we add to that the $573,000 we already spent for the design, that brings us up to a total of $7,423,000, or $323,000 over that $7.1 million that we had budgeted. So we had issued bonds for part of that project, and then we used cash reserves for the remainder. And so what we're looking here is because the base bid with the design is over budgeted, there would be consideration of allocating some funds to help the parks out, as you know, their fund balances are very low, it's less than 10% right now, and they would be having to defer other projects in order to make that work.
Mr. Waldron, and then Mr. Timmy.
Eric, maybe Eric can answer this. In my attendance at the park board meetings, this was taken into account, referenced future CIP projects. They realized there were $378,000 over, or $323,000, and they were going to incorporate that by offsetting some future CIP projects.
Actually, what was discussed? With the audit from '21, what was discussed is there was roughly $650,000 that was not used from 2021 budget, instead of that going and upping our reserve, that using some of that funding. So really, that brought us up to 7.6 million, and then we did include the pickleball shelter in this, which was another 2 million, or 200,000, I wish it was 200,000, 200,000, it takes us up to about 7.8. And in this case, they're talking about not using the remaining money from 2021 for that.
And that's already built into your reserves and your ongoing three-year budget with projects, so.
But correct me if I'm wrong, the park board has made that commitment of those funds to offset this. So coming here now and asking for another 323 is an option, but the park board has already factored that in, correct?
Yeah, so if there wasn't, you know, the head nod tonight, then we'd have to look at other projects within that 2023, '24 to scale.
In conjunction, that is the next item with the tennis, footsall, parking, and road work. That has been bid yet or has not been bid yet?
It has not been bid yet, no.
So we do not know what that amount will, if we have funds for that amount or not, or maybe there's some extra, I doubt it, but we don't know what that amount is.
Yeah, that 2.1 is based off of engineering, what they're saying.
So you have 2.1 million sitting there for that project, and if it comes in over, which a betting man would say based on what we're seeing, that to me is more viable than spending, allocating this 323, 323, because you don't want to spend those funds. I would not be in favor of...
I don't think they've got the money.
No, I think he's got the 600,000.
Well, it would be, it's part of the money that was left over from last year, but what Carol's saying is that the reserve balance is in the three-year budget, so we would have to scale back some of the CIP that we're going to ask park board to determine on Thursday, we'd have to scale that back. So technically, we do and we don't. I mean, we've got projects in '23 that we can post...
If you scaled back your CIP, how much money would you have to put towards CIP projects?
By the end of the third year, on the proposed three-year budget, and again, I haven't had the final review with Bob, but that fund balance is in the 400 to 500,000 range in year 2025, with the projects that the park board had requested.
I think it's higher than that, I think after the discussion with Bob about CIP...
We're supposed to meet tomorrow or Thursday.
Yeah, we are.
What do you normally budget for CIP projects?
In the past, it's been anywhere from 3 to 500,000, last year, obviously, was higher, and the three-year budget, the '22 through '24, was between 6 and 8, and I think we're requesting anywhere from a million to a million and two.
And in previous years before this influx of cash, it was 150,000 to get projects done, and it did defer some.
I was sorry.
Well, depending upon the year.
Well, it's between 3 and 5.
Okay, Mr. Waldron, you have the floor, are you finished with your questions?
I just don't think this is something we should fund.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Timmy, and you had the next question?
Thank you, Your Honor, I agree, especially based on, you know, this information, I think that it would be wonderful if we could, but if we're making some cuts, there's some leeway in the parks budget to handle the 323, 323. I would argue that for item four, if the bid on the pool came in so much higher, which I understand why, I don't like cutting that line item, but I think it might be a sacrifice I'm willing to make in order to get the pool done. We already have foots, not footsall, we have the tennis courts, we have the other courts, which name I can't think of.
Pickleball.
Pickleball, thank you. We have them already. The pool is what needs the attention, in my opinion. We're not doing the offices, it's already been decided. I'm comfortable with that, I'm one person.
Thank you, Mr. Went?
Sure, thank you, Your Honor. So originally, when this happened, I think we were trying to calculate that there was some debt service that had expired with the park board, and I think by, when we decided to do this bonding and this money, it was, I think at the time, was somewhere between 31 and a 32% increase in capital spending for the Parks Department. And so I was in favor of it, I said, okay, let's do this, move forward, and obviously, they then get the money and they have the priorities. Although I do have one quick question as a side note, historically, like when things happen with any of the capital improvements to parks, the pavilion, all of those things, wasn't that something that had to be, like those contracts had to be voted on here and then signed by the mayor? I, I mean, because we went through that whole thing with redoing Prospect Park Pavilion and all those things, and when we were redoing some of the pavilions, Mike might know better than me.
Mr. Waldron?
Only if they didn't have the money, and they need... Only if they didn't have the money, and they needed more money to get the project done. So if they had $200,000 set aside for Prospect Pavilion, but it wasn't enough, and they needed another $150,000, they came here and asked for the $150,000, and we decided to give it to them or not, they were still responsible for the contract and approving it.
Oh, and they signed the contracts? Because I always was on the impression.
When they don't have the money, they have to come here, which is frequent, as we know.
So, I appreciate that. So I just want one clarification. So when it was originally proposed to us, there was basically two pots of money. There was a pot of money for the pool, basically everything within the fence. And then there was another pot of money of 1 point whatever million for outside of the fence, which was the road, the tennis, the parking lot, or whatever. I want to make sure we're on the same page. Did both of those pots of money get spent just inside the fence now?
Majority of it did, yes.
So when you mentioned, well, we're still going to be bidding this out, and that might be, all that money's gone.
Right.
There's no money for the tennis courts, there's no money for parking lot, there's no money.
That's why I'm not for funding out of this money for that first project. They can find that money themselves, because we may need that more money to fund that second process.
Yeah, I'm, well, I think in both of those, I mean, we gave them this money and they prioritized it and put it together. So I'll agree with you.
The second part is extremely important, whether it's tennis, footsall, pickleball, whatever. But the important part is the parking lot and the roads.
Yeah, I don't.
We cannot build a brand-new pool and park people out on the grass. So we've got to come up with, and the park board has to come up with a reason to get those roads and the parking lot done, at least.
Thank you. Any further comments on number four or five?
Well.
Mr. Wen.
For number five, for the tennis, I mean, as part of this, when we made this vote and we had the public input or whatever, one of the big things we said to the tennis community was that we were going to have brand-new courts down there. And now from this discussion, I can't fathom that that's going to happen. I mean, we don't have the money right now. We're going to have to pull money to put a parking lot in, as Alderman Waldron said. We're going to build this brand-new pool. You've got to have a place for the people to park and a way to get in. And so the tennis courts seem like it has completely fallen off. One of the ideas that had been floated at one point, and I think that the mayor was involved with this at one point, talking with the school board, but somehow those conversations fell apart, was the idea, if we were going to have an area where we could have pickleball tournaments and everything down at Riverside, what about the idea of having tennis courts? We've already got six or eight of them up at the high school. Right across the street is TIF number 10. That TIF has a projected revenue or surplus of about $1.7 million. There is land up there that the school board owns in front of the driving range. The idea of, well, if we don't have the money to spend it down at Riverside, that why don't we work with the schools to actually put together a real tennis complex? You could have tournaments, because you'd have the six or eight that the school has, plus whatever we put together. Then you could actually have a tournament where you've got stuff. Moline is blessed that we've got indoor courts here in Moline as well. So you then have the opportunity to have those tournaments, you could bid on big tournaments, and have an alternative indoor site if it rains, so it goes from a double elimination to a single elimination. I really think that that's something that we need to consider, because I see this kind of going down the path where the, even though we promised it when we originally went through, that the tennis courts are going to wind up being on the cutting block of this whole thing.
I see your hand, Mr. Timian. I'll clarify for the council. Per my normal policy, I directed the interested party to Mr. Griffith and to the school district. And I believe they have had conversations. I'm not a part of this conversation related to this idea. And I believe that now that Mr. Veetloch is here, I would want to hear his opinions on something like that at some point. Mr. Timian.
Thank you, Your Honor. Can I correct that number five, the pool offices, is off the table now? Or is that is something we're not going to do?
I mean, it's up for consideration, but I mean, when we discussed it at the park board, the recommendation was pool first, and then ask for the remaining amount.
I'm getting the sense from the council that it goes in order as listed here. You know, although you've, some of you have already said no to the 323, 323. But getting the pool done, then determining if there's anything, getting the parking done, and then the pool offices would not really be a factor for us. But you can correct me if I'm wrong. What's next, Ms. Barnes?
And I'm so sorry. If I can just clarify one more time, Your Honor. On the tennis courts, we are saying to go ahead and go out for a bid, maybe breaking the tennis separate from the parking lot and the roads, and then come back to council, because there is no money allocated. We don't have a source right now. But do we come back with a dollar amount for council consideration?
Just as a matter of clarity, Eric, if you could break down the 2.1 million for council, because it's not clear when you say tennis and footsall, parking and roadwork, you know, break that number out.
Tennis is 1.1, so the remaining amount would be a million for, let's see, hold on. 1.1 for tennis, and then $135,000 for footsall. So 800,000 roughly for parking and roadwork.
800.
Okay, thank you. I saw a hand from Mr. Schmidt, I think. No, and then Mr. Waldron, or no?
I'll wave off.
Okay, Mr. Waldron.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am still interested in what that amount is. When it gets bid, that's the sort of thing I would like to consider here. I'm, I think the decision for the tennis facility is a school department or school district decision. In my discussions with school board members, their priority has not been towards tennis. They invested their money in that PE facility, and their next priority that they have is the pool. That pool is an ancient pool up there, and from what I'm told, that is their next priority. So, but that discussion needs to go with the school district more than I think with us.
So the discussion back in January with Dr. Savage and several of the facility staff is they couldn't commit in their short-term and even closer-to-long-term goals of spending more money on athletics, because they just spent $40 million, that they had several other priorities, like putting air conditioning in several of the schools, and what you just said about the soccer pool.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes, I think, well, yes, Mr. Wen.
I'm not proposing that they are paying for these tennis courts. I'm just proposing that we could work with them to use the land. There's, like I said, there is the surplus coming off of that TIF that we could supply. It just would be in proximity, and we'd work with them on land that all they're doing right now is mowing. And so my concern is maybe those conversations were like, hey, you pay for half of it, we pay for. That's not what my proposal would be at all. This would be an alternative to, and God knows, that's where I learned to play tennis, was down at the Riverside Park, and it's a great place to play tennis. But if it's not going to be resurfaced and not going to be done right, then the alternative, we're looking for alternative sources of income here, or a way to pay for these things. This may be a way that we can use some funds that are coming in, partner with the school. They provide the space, we provide the money. And then they could then have, you know, tournaments, we can have tournaments, and bring people in with disposable income that is going to spend money in our community.
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
The area that you're talking about, are you talking about the driving, where the driving course is?
So, yeah, the driver's range is set off the street quite a ways. And then there's, I think there's a garden that has been put in with some people. Yeah, but all of that land right there is owned by the school district.
Yeah, so in the discussion, they also talked about not wanting to give up their driving.
Again, I'm not saying putting it on the driving range. There's that space in between the driving range, yeah, so.
Thank you. I think with consideration of time, we can keep moving if you have enough feedback on those items. So we're at number six.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The last meeting or so, we. Before the council was potential, a study and the location analysis for the potential new fire station. And we were wanting to wait 30 days to get more information. What staff has come, and we're going to talk about it even a little bit later. But the new fire station, we project it will be between $10 and $15 million. It's at the very bottom of this list. Depending on which projects we have and the capacity of the bonding, possibly that the council wants to do mixing and matching funds. If you were to do it as a standalone issue and have to raise the levy rate, it would be about 10 to 15 cents on the levy to pay for that fire station. If we are able to, you know, back up some of these other projects and still use some of that Home Rule sales tax to do some bonding, then we potentially could do it without a property tax increase. But the decision in front of the council is whether or not we're going to be moving forward, if wanting to move forward with the fire station.
Mr. Wen.
Yeah, again, getting back to the TIF, I mean, this is one of the things that TIFs can be used for, is for public buildings and public projects.
That's true.
And.
That's true.
I, while we may very well need a new fire station, and I'm not saying that we don't, I think that we should probably get a plan in place. And if we've got a TIF right there, again, depending on how we want to use it, I don't want to allocate that $9 million to $20 million worth of work. But that is an option of whether we place that actually within the existing TIF, whether we change the boundaries of the TIF to allow it, whether we do a separate nearby TIF and then transfer those funds over. I mean, there are options there that wouldn't wind up being a situation in which we would have to increase the property tax rate on our residents.
I think, Mr. Schmidt, you had your hand up as well.
Yeah, as we think about the projects on this list, this is perhaps the one that I'd be most interested in bonding against within the bonding framework we already had, and not looking at going above at a levy increase. But this is the one project where I would say, okay, we might have to move forward with this. You know, it's one of those things that we can figure out. And if we can land it in that right TIF, I mean, one of the other challenges we're going to have is we don't know where it needs to be yet. So that obviously would be one part of that question. I think we're looking at this as going to be one of the longer-term things we have to keep working on, right alongside I-74 redevelopment of just being a big number right in our face that we're going to have to deal with sooner or later. And I think we have to start down that path a little before we can make final decisions about when we're going to do it.
Mr. Wen.
Yeah, and that's why I'm in favor of this study. But I think we need to, within the scope of that study, also include the location and how that interacts with current TIFs or possible future TIFs to leverage some of those possible funds. Because if we do leverage, then there could be a payback down the road to replenish the general fund or to pay off those notes.
So I've seen nodding heads. I guess I would like to know from the council that this is a major priority, given it's, yes, thank you, thumbs up. There you go, Ms. Barnes, moving on.
We'll see what we can, what magic we can work on.
Well, we can always create a new TIF.
Ms. Barnes has the floor.
And we will look into that. As you all know, currently in any of those TIFs, there's not increment available right now that would pay for principal and interest on those bonds. But that's not to say there could not be. So we'd have to cash flow the P and I, you know, until increment would be available. But we will, we will look into that. That's the direction we're getting, okay. The next one is the City Hall basement remodel. This was discussed at the March 15th roundtable. There was interest in looking at it. It's not funded currently. We need council direction.
I saw one thumbs down. Okay, I see two, three thumbs down and a hand raised. Mr. Timian, oh, and a thumbs down.
I just don't see the benefit of using, if we're strapped for cash, this is not, unless this is, the building is going to fall, then it's not a good use of money at the moment.
Thank you.
I want to put this in perspective, because it goes back to the March workshop, okay? Because everything was a domino. Fire station was not on the list. And the fire station got to the front of the list because of the fact that there were problems with the building, both chemically inside as well as in terms of the physical plant. And in the process of moving that project forward, what it does is it creates a homeless finance department, okay? They become homeless. So I need to have the finance department go somewhere, and this is where the finance department belongs. It doesn't belong somewhere else remote, anywhere else remote. It needs to be a part of the administrative center. That basement, part of that basement is meant to be used for storage of records, but not like it is today. That's all it is. Part of it is to be the physical plant, which is almost as bad as the one at the fire department, but not quite, okay? We're going to get there one day. And then a part of that was supposed to be space, literally, for the employees to have somewhere to go, because they're going to get all cramped in here, somewhere to just go sit, lunch, relax. One quarter of the building, that's that, just basically that quarter. This quarter was the storage over here, okay? Yeah, and that's kind of what we're looking, a very simplified approach to the basement as opposed to the gazillion walls they built many, many years ago and alcoves they created. That didn't do any good. So that moves the fire station somewhere. It takes finance. They need to go somewhere. And that somewhere was here, right? And then the next step was to take CED and put it together where? With building and zoning and the whole kit and caboodle. That was the one-stop shop. So it's all tied together with a rope. So if we cut the rope, cut it. But I'm going to then have to figure out where they're going to go, or if I'm going to move these folks out of here. So it's all kind of linked, is what I said before, and I can't break that link very easily.
Mr. Messias, then, Mr. Wen.
Yeah, I actually see your point. It's going to create another problem. The other thing too is we've been short-staffed for a very long time. So we're not even at capacity yet in some areas here, correct?
We're getting there. We're almost there.
We're getting there, so, yeah, it's going to be a problem eventually just to find a spot for people. And I also think the staff here deserves a nice place to work at, a place they want to go to work and just feel like they have their own space and not get moved around next month or whatnot. So I think it is important that we think about the staff for retention, for hiring the best talent. And so I do want to see that stay. And you're also improving our home. This is the heart of the city. So we want to say it's important. That's my take on it.
Mr. Wen.
I'm not saying never. I'm just saying with what we've got right there, it's not now. But I do have, this does raise a couple of quick questions. I don't know that building that well. I know I got some tours, and I remember there's a jail sale and some other things in that building that they put their fire equipment in. Now, it seems as if it's, there's the fire station, and then there's the finance department. Is there the requirement, is that a, it's a different building? Is, do you still have the same environmental issues in the finance portion of it that you do in the rest of the building?
The contamination issues are related to the lower level.
But the lower level where the finances.
Which runs below, which runs below the building. That's where the contamination is at, but it's moving, right? Because it's airborne. So that's part of the problem, is to try and get rid of that problem.
If that's the case.
The physical plant is for the building as a whole. I don't believe that it, you know, several physical plants operating in different parts of the building. It was just one massive structure that they built, superstructure, like this building. If you look at this building, it's got a very unique boiler system and physical plant that operates it. Like this building, if you look at this building, it's got a very unique boiler system and physical plant that operates it, so.
Well, certainly if this is a safety and a, and a health issue, if that's really what's going, but I guess Alderman Williams. But, but a million dollars, you can rent some, I mean, there's lots of empty space downtown Molina right now. Temporary, we could put people in for a million dollars that we could, we could solve this a different way temporarily until we're in a position to make it.
Certainly an option.
Mr. O'Brien, did you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I was going to recommend, I mean, I'm for moving forward with this. If it's all, because I remember when we had that meeting.
That's right.
That it, that's the way it was presented. It was all one package. It was all going to be the garage, we're going to utilize that space down there. We're going to start utilizing the space that we spent a lot of money to build in the first place, it's not being utilized. The upstairs of that garage is not designed for storage. And the basement of this, you know, City Hall isn't designed for, I don't know what's down. I've never been down there, but I know it's not being utilized at all.
In years, I would say that has not been utilized probably in decades, given what's down there.
I'm a thumbs up for this.
I mean, you can go in and you can tell that they left plans on the walls like the day they walked out, and they're black and white.
Okay, Mr. Waldron.
Oh, it tells you when they left.
Going back to the issue related to the old police department slash fire department now slash finance. When the gun range was in the police department, all that was mitigated. All that supposed environmental risk is gone. We spent big dollars, am I correct, Alderman Williams?
Oh, don't drag me into this.
But I mean, we spent big dollars to mitigate that building. Is that building attractive? No. Does anybody want to be down on that basement? I'm sure they don't. But it is not, we just put a new generator in it. We've upgraded the HVAC, we've worked on the elevator. I'm not sure it's as crucial as spending a million dollars, especially when we don't know where the new fire station is going to go. So I'm for making, city administrator make, cut his sausage, one of the three sausages, and make some hard decisions about where it's going to go. So I don't support the million.
All right. I'm going to need to see maybe, can we do those that do not support the million to get a clearer picture? One, two, three, four, five, six, all right? There you have some feedback, Ms. Barnes and Mr. Vitas.
And I would like to say, I think long-term, I think we'll have to look at. I think this is a, this list is not going to be something we can get done in the next one, even the three years would be overly ambitious. I think it is an important step that's going to come down, but it is, I think, a place where we have room, we have room to get it done.
Okay, thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
I'm not going to prolong this, but I can remember when we promised the fire department 20 years ago they would get a new fire station. I could see it starting to slip away once again. I hope we don't do that this time. Because the police station, that was an automatic, we got to have a new police station. That building is, you know, that needs to be torn down. Well, it's still standing and they did mitigation over there. That's true. But I think the fire department ended up feeling like second-class citizens when they were told the building that they weren't supposed to, nobody was supposed to be in. They said, eh, you know what, go ahead and go back over there, it's fine, that's your building now. So that's.
Okay. Number eight?
Okay, and if I could, Your Honor, just to make one comment. In finance, we are happy to be wherever the council wants us to be. No, I mean, seriously, it was not our request to move. We certainly don't want to have a health issue, but we weren't the ones requesting a move. We'll work wherever you want us to be and Bob wants us to be.
We'll make sure you have a room with lots of windows for your plants, Carol.
Yeah. I'll go wherever you want me to go, seriously.
You've got a freedom over there, so we'll figure it out.
Yeah, finance is pretty easy. We don't, yeah, so, okay, next, flood mitigation. 53rd and the railroad, we are currently working on a potential project down on 53rd and the railroad tracks. If that project does not move forward, currently a million dollars is out of ARPA funds that has been set aside. And we have identified that we may need upwards of 1,250,000 total to complete the current project as identified. If it does not go forward, we would like consideration of council of reallocating that ARPA money.
I just want to make sure that we're clear. There's the million dollars that we had allocated towards flood mitigation. And this just as an additional 200.
Yes, that is correct.
Because you had said it's an additional 1.25.
I'm so sorry.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
It would be an additional 250,000 for potentially 1,250,000, of which we have the 1 million of ARPA. If it goes away, it can be allocated for any project. But we were also wanting potential consideration since it was flood mitigation. It's unrestricted, it can be used for anything, to consider stormwater projects with it as well.
I see a thumbs up for that. Several thumbs up for that. Mr. Went.
Yeah, I think this is something that we've had on the books trying to fix for a very long time. Now, I think down in this area, we should be also looking at a larger scope of whether we need a TIF on down, down 92 for Alderman O'Brien to spur some development down in that area. Yeah, and include this into that, that project. I also think, and I know I've been banging my head, and I'm not sure if we need to have this discussion now, that we need to have a grant czar or somebody in the city that their focus is getting us grants, to writing them, coordinating them, whatever the case may be. I know that we had at one point wrote a grant for this. We tried once, we swung, we missed. But there is not just one bucket of money for flood mitigation. It is all over the place. And something like this, the fact that we're not getting any grants for that, I think is, we dropped the ball someplace along the line. So I am, I am all for this, but we need to hire somebody who is our grant person or whatever because we're missing out, we're not getting our fair share.
Mr. Vitas or Mr. Vitas, do we have a timeline and when we'll know if the project's moving forward or not?
We don't have a definitive timeline relative to the project at hand. I can tell you that the council or the city has spent in excess of $100,000 in engineering already at this location. And we're committed to, to the location, committed to doing something there to make improvements. But I think a lot of it is contingent on whether or not there is a bona fide project going forward or not.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Barnes, what further direction do you need?
I guess maybe a consensus, and maybe at budget time we'll have a little more direction. But a consensus if this project does not move forward as is, that this, that 1 million dollars and would go back into the general pot of projects here we're trying to fund or allocated to stormwater.
Mr. Went.
Yeah, help me understand, because clearly there's a little disconnect. Some people know some information that's happening here of this project maybe not going forward and.
We don't know the answer to those questions.
Why wouldn't it go forward?
Why wouldn't what go forward?
The thing that we've talked about for five years, trying to fix the stormwater issue down at this location.
Yeah, the stormwater project there is related, is very specifically to what's going on with our discussions with the railroad and the pump station. And whether the pump station remains or relocates from its present location, which is in a permanent easement in the rail right of way.
Right.
That's where it's at. They would like it to move, we're not so sure we're ready to move it until we get, you know, some consideration from the railroad for other issues we're dealing with related to future Amtrak. There's a lot of bartering and horse trading going on, I will say that.
So are you saying that it wouldn't happen because?
It might not happen to the scale that, that, you know, it could be a three and a half million dollar project, it could be a million and a half dollar project. It all depends on what happens with our discussions with the railroad and with, you know, neighboring industry.
I guess if there's that much that's unknown, I want that to come back to us before it gets swept into something else.
What would be swept? Nothing gets.
Meaning where the million goes?
Yeah.
Well, no, the million, I mean, we bring that back, that's up to council.
Oh, absolutely.
You just proposed that it would get stolen.
This was, this was when we were pursuing the original FEMA grant that we didn't get, if you'll remember.
And what I was trying to say is if it did not go forward, if council decided not to go forward with that project, we would like consideration as we move, not move through these projects, but in conjunction with all these projects, that million dollars of ARPA would then be freed up potentially for other things because it can be spent on anything, it's unrestricted.
Okay, let's just move forward with the project and if it doesn't go, then let us know.
Okay, that's fine, we're going to leave that to you.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Barnes.
The next item is the 16th Street and Avenue of the Cities intersection. This again got brought up briefly on the 13th. This project was deferred when we amended the 22 budget. We had identified it as a $600,000 project. It had been originally adopted by council. We deferred it because of inflation and we just weren't able to get the project done. We had actually earmarked it, we thought we were going to get it done in '23. Then as David and Laura proceeded to develop the three-year plan, '23 through '25, again, lots of projects going over budget. And the fact that this project potentially was going to have an expanded scope, it actually more than doubled potentially with the expanded scope. And during the presentation on the 13th, all I can offer up is we apologize that we didn't communicate that this project was deferred. We knew at that time, because we were already working on this big project list, that it was going to come back for further discussion. And if we're paying cash and out of home rule, we can certainly allocate this money out of home rule sales tax.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Yeah, when we put this on the CIP, we had made a decision philosophically that when we were going to do streets, that we were going to try to include a project every couple of years that was a transformative project, a project that came out of one of the many studies that we spent hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars on that we got and then wound up just getting put on a shelf and nothing ever got from them. This is one specifically from the Avenue of the Cities plan was to fix this interception, intersection. We've all been there, you know that swoop corner that comes around and you can't even barely get anything at country style because you're scared that, that they're going to jump the curb and hit you. This has been in the budget. We have talked with the people who own properties, with Whiteys, with Lorantorita. We've let them know that this is going to happen. And to pull the rug out from underneath them now, I think is a huge mistake. We do already have $600,000 that was not spent this year that goes towards this. So this isn't 1.2 million, it's just an additional 600,000. Unless we're sweeping accounts sometimes and not other times. I still don't understand why this is happening because all our other CIP projects, when we don't get it done this year, it carries on to the following year. And this should be, this shouldn't be any different. Because council voted on it and it was in the budget.
I just want to be clear, the money was not swept or swept somewhere else. It was a matter of, I have to say, a transition. We have a new, you know, Director of Engineering. With inflation, all of the projects could not fit. And at the time when we were looking at it now being 1.2 million dollars, we knew we were going to have to come back in front of council for further discussion. And so it did get deferred entirely. It is not in the '23 through '25 budget. That's why it's in front of you tonight, the 1,250,000 for a discussion item now that we can bring up.
So I need, thank you, Ms. Barnes, I didn't mean to cut you off. We need to hear from some other council members on this item. Mr. Moyer.
Thank you. So it's been almost four years. It was, it's about five years ago we started that Avenue of the Cities plan. About 3.6 years ago, I think it passed council. This was the first project that was going to get done in that, in that, in that particular plan. So to this day, we've not actually done a single project on that. But I think one of the next quick wins that are on that is the 41st Street intersection, which includes pushing the crosswalks and the signaling back a little bit to make it safer for people to pass or to cross 41st Street and across 23rd Avenue. So we hear this a lot and we've gone to residents and talked to them, showed them the plan and showed them the designs. It's been on, it's probably social media, something that can be looked up. It's been talked about quite a bit on that. And it's just this 23rd Avenue plan. We, I think every year for a while we were bringing this up. It's in the plan, what are we going to do? This was the thing, and I think we need to move forward with it.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see thumbs up from Waldron, Williams, Schmidt, Timian. All right, I think we have enough to tell you to continue to keep that in our plans.
Okay, wonderful. And again, we apologize from a staff level, all of us, if there was, you know, a breakdown in communication. You know, we're sorry, we certainly were not trying to hide anything from council, so.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. The number, next thing up is Arsenal Viaduct, number 10.
And this project is another one that potentially is expanded. David is currently working on this and we found out that it appeared to be a more viable project if we coupled the pedestrian bridge, the letdown structure with the redecking. It has now been expanded to a total of $11,295,000. And the city's share of that project would now be $3,388,000. In the budget that David did present back on the 13th, that you, that you all saw by year, we had 500,000 in there for design in '23 and another million and a half for the construction in '24. That does leave us with 1,388,000. And so that is where we are at right now. If we couple those projects together and get it done, number one, we feel we have a much better chance of getting the federal grant. And so we would like council's consideration for the 1,388,000.
I want to just, I see thumbs up from a couple of people. I want to just add that in my meeting yesterday with the Roosevelt Group, there's another grant that could be coupled with the DCIP grant application. There's some details related to that that I think Mr. Dreyer knows, but I will be bringing that back to leadership. So there is the potential for a little bit more money, I think, unless that's been included here. But I just wanted to add that. Mr. Went.
Yeah, and, and obviously if we can get 70% of this thing paid for, I guess, I wouldn't want to pay a dime over 30% of this thing because I think that the, most of the benefit is for the arsenal and everything. But I'm still trying to understand, like, this is an example where on this list it says it's 1.388, but it's really 3.388 because there's.
The total amount, the city share is 3,388,000. We had budgeted 500,000 in '23, a million and a half in '24, no additional money because the scope of the project was only for the redecking.
Right, but some of these other things we had budgeted before as well, but they didn't get that benefit of reducing the amount.
And I'm so sorry, which ones are we talking about?
I mean, this, this, I think to be clear, this is, this should say 3.388 is what we're spending. It's not 1.3.
It says at the beginning of the sentence.
Well, they added that on later, but, but if we're comparing apples to apples of what these things are costing, there's this mysterious 2 million that is kind of tucked away in a future budget that we haven't adopted yet.
It was in the CIP that was presented by David.
Right, but we haven't adopted that for next year yet.
No, but it was earmarked and we're going to be discussing that in October, just like we'll be finalizing this list.
We earmarked stuff for the flood mitigation as well. Right? I mean, didn't we mitigate a million dollars for the flood mitigation, but that didn't get.
No, but that bucket of cash is what is available out of that 13.8, mix and match those monies. And if you want to keep that money in the flood mitigation, it just stays with that 13.8.
Yeah, I understand that, I think, I think we're doing a little bit. I understand. I think, I think we're doing a little bit of fuzzy math. I, I.
Oh, no. I, I'm happy to work it through with you. I am.
Well, we'll have to do that. I mean, we need to give feedback versus hash out philosophies. But Mr. Timian, I saw your hand.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Any other feedback for Ms. Barnes on this?
Yeah.
Direction. Are we gonna go forward with the project or not?
Thumbs up.
Roll the dice.
Thank you.
And we'll clearly outline the different sources. That is CIP, MFT, and then this particular over. It'll be some cash reserves to pay for the difference.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, so we're to number 11, the one-stop shop.
Yes. And that one kind of stands on its own. We currently have $2 million in ARPA funds. It's part of this cash reserves. It's part of that 13-8 we're talking about. Just because it's flexible, flexible money and we knew it tied in with the basement, we want to make sure that is, is that project a priority of council to move forward?
Waldron, I think I saw your hand, or is that a thumb?
Depends on how I cut that sausage.
I'm for this.
Mr. Waldron?
I cut one of the sausages, but the other two I'm still for.
Okay. Well, I can always eat two. I never can eat three.
Okay.
I got it on my plate.
All right. Mr. Went?
Yeah. I've been advocate of, of trying to get a development, a Buzman or a one-stop shop or whatever for seven years. That being said, I, I, I think this is, you know, you talk about the NCAA. I think this is, for me anyway, this is one of the, this is the first out. Now, if we wind up going through this whole list and we come back and it can be done, this would be my first in. But I, for, for me right now with, with where we're at, I, I, I'm still not comfortable when we're gonna get down to the bottom that we're gonna have cut enough.
Well, we cut a lot.
Oh, I, I know we cut a lot, but you were also talking $39 million over here. And so from, from my standpoint, this would be, if, if we winds up staying in, fine. Like I said, I want it to happen, but this will be probably my first out. But if it stays out, it'll probably be my first in.
Thank you. Others from the council? I see thumbs up from Mr. O'Brien. Thumbs, I see a thumbs down. I see mostly thumbs up, Ms. Barnes.
Okay.
I.
Mr. Went?
No. Moyer?
Oh, Moyer. Sorry. Mr. Moyer?
I, I was just gonna say that, you know, I, I'm not necessarily against any of these projects. I just think that maybe some of these should be delayed while we grab, grab with some of the higher priorities like the fire station and downtown redevelopment. So I'm a thumbs down. That's the only reason why.
Okay. It does, it, it, as I mentioned earlier and, you know, started to put things in baskets, that if we're talking connected, you know, domino effect, then, you know, these three things have to be considered. And, and it sounds like some things could be delayed, but other things have more, if like, if, for example, with the health concern in that other building, we might need to move more quickly.
Your Honor.
Mr. Went?
There, there are four thumbs up and then there was two thumbs down and then there's two that have not, so, and, and I think they're wrestling with this. So I think that it's important to, before we spend $2 million that we hear from them and, and understand what they're saying.
Yes. Those that haven't weighed in, Mr. Schmidt?
No. I just, I, I really want the one-stop shop to happen. Very much in something I, I want to see. I do have concerns. I mean, and, and as far as keeping on the list is, is fine, but we're not gonna get to that, the goal of where we need to be. And I just, I know it's gonna come out in a future round from, from my perspective. I think there are other higher priorities and that's, this is one of the hardest ones for me to say that I, I just don't think we have everything we need to move forward on it. And we can kind of keep it in that next thing in, but I just have concerns on, on, we're more with that investment at that, at this time.
Thank you. Was the other person, Mr. Macias or Mr. Timian?
Timian. Where would this money, this is ARPA money. It's restricted?
Unrestricted.
Unrestricted. So it could be used anywhere. That doesn't help because, I mean, like, if I have to like weigh this on a scale, you know, what am I, what is this competing with? And, and that's obviously unknown. I agree with Alderman Schmidt, but I also don't want to blacklist this and have it never come back. So, I mean, like, is, can we put it in a tier two?
I'd be all for tier two.
Tier 1.1?
Whatever you want to call it.
So I still think it probably, keep the budget.
So it sounds like because we're fairly split on this one, yes, like a tier two of, if we can make it work, if it fits our principles of not bonding out completely, which it sort of sounded like we were headed that direction, then maybe it can stay in. But if, if we, if it causes us to have to do more with bonding or something, or something else, then it might be out. Is that a fair assessment, council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll keep moving because we still have everything else on our agenda to do.
Yes.
But even though this is good conversation.
Yes. No, it's very, it's very helpful, very helpful. You understand what staff has been struggling with on this. As, before we go on, does any, has anybody kept a tally? Where are we at with total, total? With what's in? Are we getting close to the 13 million now?
Yes.
I got like 14 million.
Okay. Just so you know, so we're maybe into potential bonding consideration or cutting, cutting additional projects, but we'll carry on. Thank you. I needed an update. Downtown.
Yeah, I think, Ms. Barnes, just to consolidate time, I, I did not write number 12 down as something that we talked about in our previous basket, but it seems like it might be related.
It's related to the master planning area.
Yeah. Okay. So can we put it in that basket and therefore it needs to be addressed like the other items we've already talked about? Yes, Mr. Went?
Well, I, I guess, is number, I guess, 12 and 13, are these iDOT parcels or is this some other properties that we're not aware of that you're considering purchasing?
There's not a property that we haven't talked about either publicly or in executive session. And those discuss in executive session, I can't talk about in public session.
That doesn't help me.
Yeah.
So I can, I can, I can, I'll just say that, that the iDOT parcels are separate from, from the other, other parcel. The 12 and the 13 are not the same.
Is 12 iDOT parcels?
No. 13 is iDOT. It says it in the red. Mr. Waldron, was that your arm up?
Yeah, my arm's up for a no. You talk.
Oh, okay.
First in or first out, this is, if this isn't part of the iDOT properties, then it's a no for me.
Okay. Do we have any others that agree with that perspective?
I don't know.
Mr. Went?
Yeah. I, I mean, I guess, I can't allocate 1.25 million on something I have no idea what we're talking about. You know, I mean, if maybe later today you tell us what it is, then it might change. But I'm all for the iDOT stuff, but I, I'm not prepared to give a thumbs up for us acquiring a property that I have no idea what we're talking about.
Okay. Is that enough, Ms. Barnes?
I'll look to.
I won't talk about it publicly.
Okay. All right.
So then we talked about 13 and 14?
Yep. So the 13, that is the excess parcels. We are hoping it's going to be much less than that, but we do not know at this point. So we have targeted a million dollars. What's the amount council wants, Theresa? We certainly don't want to not have money available if we need to acquire it. So I look for direction on that. What dollar amount would you like?
Mr. Moyer?
Is that Sixth Avenue or Sixth Street?
I'm so sorry. That was mislabeled. It's in the red. I am, that, I'm so sorry. It was a typo.
So it's that, Sixth Avenue?
No, it's neither.
No, it's iDOT excess parcels as it states in red.
Well, some of us are also going off of what was actually published, so sorry that it's not.
Yeah.
We, we didn't have the updated stuff.
Yeah. If you look at the red copy we just handed out.
Yeah, I just pulled it up, so.
Yeah.
Yep. That is actually the iDOT excess parcels under the I-74.
Didn't we, didn't we set aside money for that? Or are you gonna tell me that we spent that money for the church?
No, no. It's, it's on her other page as possible funds to be used for this.
I, I think we addressed this already. We've, we've already said that we, that I believe a majority of us or all of us want to make sure we can assemble that property.
Correct. But I, I got out of Carol that she wants an additional million dollars.
Yes, because the, the number one on the I-74 has now been reallocated primarily to the church property.
So what I said was correct.
Okay.
Took the money for property acquisition and put it towards the church.
That is correct.
Okay. So I need to hold the council then for this additional million. I see a thumbs up from Moyer, mostly thumbs up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right into the court.
Thank you.
You know how I feel.
Ms. Barnes?
Yes. Hopefully we won't meet a million, but we will leave it there. Okay. Next.
I think we have fully addressed 14 earlier in our discussion.
But it's 12, a thumbs down?
Oh, yeah. Did you get your?
Yeah, I, I have zero.
Okay.
That was the sense I got from the conversation.
Straighter. Yes.
12 is zero.
Then the next six projects are all recommendations that were coming from Alex with Renew Moline. In some fashion or another, council has seen those. It's in the memo that we attached from Alex in your, the handouts tonight. We talked about the skate park already. The Sixth Avenue and 21st Public Space Construction. Again, this was for an additional park area to be developed on cul-de-sac properties. That's a million dollars. The Fifth Avenue, 23rd, again, renewed request for streetscape and public art. That's the million 20. And then we've already talked about the Milltown Collector and the Spiegel. So that whole bucket there, we need direction from council.
I thought we had direction on those.
Yes, it's that first one there or the second one, the Sixth Avenue one.
The, the, what's the cul-de-sac area?
1617 then, if we could get direction. Yep.
Well.
Mr. Waldron?
I'm not 415. I've never been 415. So I want to at least stick to my guns here and say that's a, that's a thumbs down.
Yep.
I'm down with 15, too.
That's the skate park.
Mr. Moyer?
I, I guess this goes, this goes back to the master plan study. I mean, I think we really need to know more about how it all ties together and how much money's gonna be left over. And we've got to prioritize the, the basin and, and, so I'm not, I don't want to say thumbs down. I just, I want to wait until I.
It sounds like it's another tier two type situation. Mr. Macias?
Yeah, and I agree. And it, it could be that we find, find that there could be a better place. And I know there was somebody who made a comment earlier today. And I was a big supporter of the skate park, but now that we're getting some of these pieces and we don't have a master plan yet, I want to be flexible with it. But yeah, tier two for me.
Okay.
Rest of the council, Mr. Went?
Yeah. And I've been an advocate for it, but I'm, I'm kind of sitting at the, the same place. Though, if we're going all the way down, it gets to 18, which I think is part of this whole, whole thing, is we do need to make sure we have a chunk of money that is available because we have promised a riverfront park that is going to be the jewel of Moline. And so my concern is we go through these and this gets to the, the bonding, where if we wound up spending all of our money right now and then we've got no money left to actually do the thing that we've already promised. And so I, I think if we're able to do this without any bonding or very, very, very minimal bonding, I, I would feel comfortable with it because then we could, down the road, once we get the plan and start putting things together, we could bond for that specifically. But I, I'm a defer for all of these things until we get this master plan. I'm for all of them, but we need to get this.
So, you know, one thing, one thing we haven't talked about, and I'm just gonna put this out there, is that this is not all on us. When we talk about developing that corridor, there's public-private partnerships that need to be formed. So the money that we need oftentimes would go toward public infrastructure improvements to support vertical construction by private parties. So without a master plan, you know, part of the master plan is not just, you know, all the graphics and the pretty pictures and the maps because you all get, you know, it's like the ULI plan. It's beautiful, but it's not, it's not a real thing. It's a picture. You want to grow the tree, you want to grow the apple, you want to pull it off and actually bite it. That's what a master plan is. And, and what you need in addition to just this planning piece is you have to have a full understanding of what the total public infrastructure costs are to achieve the master plan and then know what type of vertical construction relevancy will take place, that you can match your dollars against private dollars and form those public partnerships. That's the kind of master planning process we're talking about. It's very similar to what we're doing with the Spiegel study, is that we're not just going in and saying, let's study it to study it and kick this out, kick this in. No, no, no. It's to come back and say, is it really financially feasible? It's more of a fees, financial feasibility study as much as a use study. Because if it's uses that don't produce the revenue you need, they get the boot unless of course you want them, unless you want them. So I'm just saying that because many of these big ticket items that Alex has here really tie back to public-private partnerships. And Alex, you?
Thank you. If I may add, and I apologize for taking your time, but the item that is number 17 was intended specifically to support the redevelopment of the Vanch property. That's not going to happen in 2023. I think you can confidently take that off the list. The others were, as Bob said, I, I think the master planning exercise will be super helpful. As Bob said, I think that will outline probably an eight to 10-year plan of phasing, of investments, of what you can achieve and when. And I think you have to do that in a master planning process. And we understood that from the get-go with the ULI work. But we also worked really hard to get some momentum on some projects. And one of those was the skate park. And so we have spent the last year out in the public talking about it. I understand that there are concerns about it. I understand it is a big-ticket item. But we have an RFQP out right now for design. I think the deadline is Friday for those responses. And we've been diligently trying to bring some projects in that ULI study forward for you to demonstrate that progress. So even though you will make a decision tonight potentially to defer the 1.5 million to '24 or beyond, I would respectfully request that we be able to continue with that two-phase design exercise that will give you a schematic design and a cost estimate. It will show you what it looks like. It will show you that it's visible from public rights of way. It will show you how it connects to adjacent neighborhoods. And then punt the rest. We have specifically designed this so you can get the schematic design. You'll know what it looks like. You'll know if iDOT can permit it. You'll know how much it's going to cost. And then do the full design at some point in the future if you choose to defer that a year. So I would just respectfully request consideration of not throwing the entire thing out. Thank you.
So, so what I'm gathering, thank you, Ms. Elias, what I'm gathering is that numbers 15, 16, and 17 are, are probably in a deferred basket within the, everything related to the master planning. Is that a correct assumption of this council?
Well, I, I think 20 as well.
And yes, okay. And 20.
And 18.
No, that, I mean, you're wanting to defer all of them or you, they're, they're all part of the master planning thing, but it sounded to me, what I was starting to hear was we're breaking out some of these things into could be deferred. Others really have to stay focused with the master plan. Mr. Schmidt?
I, I think at this point, we would have to bucket them all together. And if we want to set aside a dollar amount that goes to what it is, but without the master plan to prioritize or say which of these is sticking around. I mean, we could earmark to the Milltown Basin as the default, but that could turn into any of these things. I think, I think that maybe we might want to set some money there. And I think that would be kind of, to me, whatever is left, we need to get some, put some money there.
Yeah.
But I think we're, we're running into the, how we're going to fund it is gonna need to be the more creative end on this end of what we're talking about.
And when we get down, we may have a better idea of where we're at.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're very close here. And this is good timing for us considering the other things we have to get to tonight. Ms. Barnes, I think we're at 21.
Yes. And again, I'm just kind of shoring, shoring up council's wishes. We heard last week to potentially consider forgiving the $500,000 loan from the General Fund to Sanitation. And then we would be eliminating that loan pay, that annual principal and interest payment from sanitation. from sanitation and offsetting the increase in user fees.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, my big question on this all along is what are we giving up to do that? And now it's too much. We can look at if we can defer that in order to help stabilize our rates, keep things in place. That is definitely something I'm still supportive of, but I think at this point, forgiving it is kind of off the table for me.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Went?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of deferring for four years and then relooking at it.
Agreed.
Mr. Waldron, was that you saying agreed?
I do. It's something I would prefer because it affects every single resident. Every single resident would get a benefit out of it. And while I say that, I just don't think in this listing, what we have to make a decision on, it's worth doing at this time.
Okay. Is there anyone who disagrees? We'll just go that direction. All right, hearing none, I think, Carol, that's your feedback.
Is everybody good for four years? And then bring it back? Because I'd like it to be brought back. Well, how many years more do we owe on it? 10 more, 10 more years?
We haven't even started, yes, 10 years.
So, yeah.
Defer for four years until 2026. That's what we'll put in with the budget. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Then coming back to the fire station, again, just in the planning process, we talked about trying to do a location study. Also, with that, does the council want to move forward with a potential design if we figure out a location?
Can we know where it's at? And then we have to design it.
Mr. Went?
Yeah, I don't know how we can design it without not knowing where it's at and what else it might take into consideration. So it's going to have to happen, but I think it needs to be taken off this list because that, I have a feeling it's going to be down the road.
Mr. Schmidt?
And what is the realistic timeframe of when we would have that study replacement done? Like, that's my big thing, too, especially if we're talking about 2023, that this really wouldn't be getting to that point unless I'm wrong.
And again, these projects are for '23 through '25. It's a three-year window. But I know we deferred that scope. I mean, once we got it, how quickly would it be?
You're talking a long time. I mean, you're talking about site location analysis, which is a several-month process. It's going to take us, even if you approved it at the end of, beginning of October, we're not going to get the results of that probably until 2023. And then based on those results, you don't know where the property is going to be. Then you've got to go through possible property acquisition of its property that we don't own. So I can't predict that because I don't know the result of the study. But if you do have a property and you do have a location and people agree to it, then you're going to spend the next 12 months probably designing it. So you're going to spend all of '23 going through that design, that design development process from preliminary to final design, and then the bidding. So you're looking at '24. I mean, realistically, it's a '24 delivery.
And if we're talking about '24, then.
But you have to stagger the resources over a period of time. I can't go into '24, not have the resource to actually do the design work. And I can't have, if you don't have the design, obviously, you're going to have to have the money for the, whatever you want to refer to as the physical construction. So we're talking about an 18-month process, at least an 18-month process.
Thank you.
I've never seen a.
Mr. Schmidt?
But, and based on all that, and knowing that we're looking out several years, I mean, this to me, I think, has to remain in that timeframe. Even if it's not for '23, if we're looking at '24.
Staggered.
Projects or considering that, I mean, I would be in favor of keeping it in line. Knowing that, I think, well, I think this is only round one.
All right.
You're right.
Other opinions on, you know, keeping it in or deferring it a little or over three years? I'd see some more thumbs up than thumbs down. Mr. Went, is that a question, hand or?
Yeah, I mean, I just have a problem allocating this. I mean, if it winds up coming up, it can always get added back in. We can figure it out down the road. But I think in the scheme of these things, we're not even there yet to be allocating money. Because there's a lot of other things that we're like, well, we're eventually going to get to that, but we took those things out. So I would be in favor of taking this out and go back in when it's appropriate.
And Ms. Barnes, do you have what you need? Okay.
So for, so for clarification?
62.
62, is that correct?
Okay. Although there's no, yeah.
So it's going to, we're going to leave it in the three years.
It was a vote to defer to 2020.
It's not a vote. It's just, it's just feedback.
It is, that's correct. I'm sorry, what?
Sure feels like a vote.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know why we're not voting back. Seems like a vote.
Okay, then. We just had as a placeholder the solar farm, as you know.
Conceptual.
Yeah, it is conceptual.
Don't need any money for it right now. Not asking for any money right now.
We're learning the council.
No money right now.
You don't need any money, it's a thumbs.
There we go.
All right.
And then lastly, we had just thrown in some additional money for contingency that was rounding out. If we issued bonds for the whole amount, we weren't recommending that. That was an example. But we do know that potentially we may need additional money if there was dark fiber for the broadband. And the quiet zone, we think we're covered. We've got $3 million in ARPA funds, but until we get that grant and hear back, and if we get the funding or not, it may be more than the 3 million. So that was just to let you know that we don't know right now what the costs are.
Good point.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So.
No joking. I can't read it from online. Anyway, we're good now, Ms. Barnes?
Yeah, so the plan is we will, hopefully this money is within that cash, 13.8 million dollars roughly, or we'll be proposing possibly some bonding. But we will come up with a cash flow for the three-year period with these projects we've identified for further discussion on the Saturday session of the budget. So you can continue to think about these, but it will help us at least build something for discussion for the October 22nd date.
Is it going to be a surprise where we have to wait till that time?
A surprise?
What our number is?
I think you can be in contact with staff over.
We will let you know. We will let you know.
Thank you. We are going to move on now. Thank you, Mr. Lodi, for being patient. I believe you're the next up. Annual outside city limits utility customers list, 7.2.
The list is in your packet. I really have nothing to report. It's an informational item. It's an obligation that staff has to provide with regard to the provision of the city ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Went, Mr. Waldron has a question.
Is it our intent to annex these people that are eligible?
Yes, we are working through that process with Ansel Glinch now.
Even if they're not willing?
That's a different, there's two approaches. I'm going to answer that. There's two approaches. If they're willing and they sign up, it's a straight annexation, it's not a problem. If they refuse, which some of them have, then it's a whole different process that we have to go through. And that's something that we're working through the gymnastics on.
Well, me personally, I'm for going after the folks that are, should be in the city that aren't.
I would concur.
Mr. Went?
And just for the record, after this 32, there's another 19, and then after that 19, there's another 19. Is that right?
There are an additional 19 at some point after this 32.
Okay, because they then become eligible because their neighbors are in and they then meet the mark or whatever. I just.
It's like 52 properties total, correct?
Yeah, that there's, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to the next. Mr. Bolin, thank you so much for waiting this whole time. I apologize for not moving you up in the agenda. Electric vehicle ordinance, informational.
That's okay, Mayor, thanks, everyone. Administration asked us to take a look around at some things that communities are doing to prepare for EV infrastructure. We found three kinds of ordinances that communities are looking at. And that's required EV infrastructure for new development, zoning for EV charging as a principal or accessory use, and regulations for EV charging in public property or on the public right-of-way. So we've summarized those kinds of ordinances in the memo that's in your packet. We received some initial feedback from staff. We welcome your feedback. Many of these ordinances would need to be zoning text amendments. We would require a public hearing before the Plan Commission. And so we plan to bring those to the Plan Commission in the coming weeks and further develop proposed ordinances with them. And it would produce a recommendation for you all to consider later. So this is certainly not your last opportunity to chime in on that, on this topic. But in terms of initial feedback on the kinds of ordinances that we described, we're planning to talk to the Plan Commission about a requirement for EV infrastructure for new or reconstructed commercial, industrial, or multifamily, where 20% of the off-street parking spaces would be EV-ready. EV-ready meaning just installation of conduit, not the chargers themselves, having the conduit ready there for potential future installation of further EV infrastructure. In terms of zoning for EV charging stations, generally allowed level one and level two charging as an accessory to a permitted principal use in throughout the city. And then fast chargers as an accessory, the level three fast chargers accessory to a permitted principal use in business and manufacturing districts. Now, the permitted, the chargers themselves, when they're a principal use, many communities treat those the same as a gas station. They have the same impacts, or similar impacts, I should say. And so the idea would be to ask the Plan Commission to consider treating, when the chargers are a principal use, treating them the same way as gas stations in the use list. And then public property, we'll be talking to them about regulations for the establishment and use of public, the public use of EV charging on public property. And the city, of course, can also self-impose its own requirements for EV infrastructure, new public projects. Like I said, this is only initial feedback, plan to talk to the Plan Commission about this, but happy to accept any other additional feedback or answer any questions you might have at this time.
All right, Mr. Went?
Other communities like ours, I mean, 20% seems like a pretty high number. I mean, I was looking through, you know, like a place like Schaumburg, I think, you know, it's recommended and it's only like 5% or something like that. 20% be in these large cities, which I am not opposed to us starting the ball rolling, but we certainly are not the place where we're going to have the, a premium number of electric cars compared to what's happened in DC and St. Louis and those sorts of things. The 20%, because that seems like some of these larger communities, not a smaller community, I guess.
Point well taken. I do want to point out, and our environmental working group has noted this, that we are in an EV charging corridor here. And some of the session, Mr. Veeloke and I and others in the staff went to, Moline is in this area for the corridor of that. So just to point that out, that in addition to what you're saying, Mr. Went. Yes, what else would you like to add?
Well, and to that point, I've got no problem, but that doesn't have anything to do with somebody who's got a duplex that they're rehabbing. Nobody's going to jump off the interstate and go charge at their place. I'm all for, you know, if we've got islands, you know, I'd be even for if somebody's putting in a new parking lot downtown, putting the conduit in. I mean, because there's never a time where it's cheaper than if something is completely dug up and in that. And adding just conduit is fairly inexpensive, all things being considered. So I'm all for those sorts of things. I'm just, you know, putting additional regulations if somebody's rehabbing a sixplex and now all of a sudden they're going to have to put 20% of their parking. Yeah, I think it's unrealistic, so.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. I like the distinction that this is just EV-ready, laying conduit so that we don't have to tear it up or that the homeowner doesn't have to. There could be that private person who comes in with 500 charging stations and plops them down everywhere. I do question a little bit the example of anything over five units. It does seem like it's borderline. I love public parking. I love big apartment complexes. The sixplex is a little weird, but I also see a benefit, so I'm willing to hear it out. I do wonder if there's a way to require this, like with the landscaping ordinance, with redevelopment, just so that it could be, as we have all these, you know, parking lots, whether it's the mall or, you know, a lot of our commercial areas, when they are reacquired and redeveloped, there could be some requirement just for the EV-ready infrastructure so that 10 years down the line, someone can plug something in.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Bolin. People can always email you other thoughts, but we're thankful for your work on this.
Very good, thank you, Mayor, thanks, everyone.
All right, I will call a regular council meeting to order now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Waldron, do you have an invocation?
God, no.
All right, roll call, please.
And actually, Alderman Schmidt is first to vote.
Yes, so that should have been Mr. Schmidt.
Sorry, sorry. No, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Roll call, Alderman Williams? Macias?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of committee of the whole council and executive session minutes of September 20th, 2022. Resolutions. Council Bill 1098-2022 are a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to apply for a state highway permit from the Illinois Department of Transportation and to execute the necessary forms in conjunction with the Dia de los Muertos parade sponsored by Mercado on 5th, scheduled for Saturday, October 22nd, 2022. Council Bill 1165-2022, a resolution authorizing the fleet facilities manager to purchase a flatbed stake rack and snow fighting package from Bonnell Industries Incorporated on Sourcewell contract number 155923 for $21,172.29. Council Bill 1166-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Train US Incorporated for the purchase and installation of an air-cooled condenser unit and evaporator coil at the Public Works Building utilizing Omnia Partners contract number 15JLP023 for the amount of $84,770. Council Bill 1167-2022, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase seven budgeted one-ton pickup truck replacements from Sexton Ford in Moline, Illinois for an amount not to exceed $716,994.
Your Honor, I move for the approval of this consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Went. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams? Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight eyes, no names. And that motion passes. Non-consent agenda, second meeting ordinances. Council Bill 3025-2022, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code ordinances. By repealing Chapter 4 in its entirety and acting in lieu thereof, one new Chapter 4 dealing with the same subject matter.
Move to approve.
Motion by Alderman, Timian, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman, Macias. Discussion, Mr. Timian?
Your Honor, I'd like to propose an amendment to remove the single-service restrict- to remove the single-serve restriction from Chapter 4.
Second.
Thank you. Who was that seconded by?
Waldrono.
Okay. Motion by, a motion to amend, to remove single-serve by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman Waldron. Discussion. Mr. Went.
I'd like to move to amend that, to say that it will be removed from all places outside of downtown Moline.
Is there a second? All right, that motion fails for a lack of a second. So we're back to the original amendment. Mr. Went.
Yes, I probably should have talked before I did that. So the reason I did that was because the chief has come and spoken a number of times to us about how, all things being equal, that this has reduced vagrancy. And the problem, the place that we've had the problem with has been downtown. There hasn't been a concerted problem anywhere else other than downtown. He showed that during COVID, before, during, after similarly situated communities, Rock Island and us, that the calls in Rock Island continued. Now, I don't know if, supposedly they also have something on the books like this, but it's apparently not enforced. In Moline, it has been, and it has reduced the calls. I, I am not prepared to go against what our police have indicated is something that is working in the city. I don't disagree. We don't necessarily need it throughout the entire town. But in our downtown area, it is something that has proven to work.
Mr. Williams.
To be fair, it absolutely worked. But it worked for a group of individuals that are no longer here because they lived under a bridge that no longer exists and harassed employees that dispatch that are no longer there. That for the most part, it absolutely worked when it worked, but it also put constraints throughout the rest of the city. And where that, where your amendment's a safe, a safe bet, I'm all for a clean sweep, just to get rid of it, to see how it goes. If, in fact, it does work out that we don't need this and it's not repeating sales and is a pain to the rest of the citizens, then for a short period of time, I don't like to have an ordinance just to target one problem, but it worked and we no longer need it. If however, you know, rears its head again, we can come back with something tweaked a little bit, written more that we all could agree on, and then implement that. I mean, Lord knows, we beat it up enough, we know exactly what we want. So I think by just wiping it out, that that's a way of looking at it, too. That's why I support Alderman Timian.
Okay. Any other comments on Alderman Timian's amendment? Hearing none, will vote on the amendment. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams. Macias. Went. Timian. Moyer. O'Brien. Waldron. Six ayes, two nays. And that motion passes.
All right, we're back to the motion on the table, which is Chapter 4. Mr. Went.
I do have a question and had asked this. As you read through this, there's some conflicting language regarding minors in taverns. There's, within the same code section, one section says that they're able to come in with their parents. And another section says they, within the same code, says that they're prohibited from coming in. And so if Margaret wants to speak to that, that would be terrific.
Margaret.
Thank you. So we do appreciate you bringing that forward. As you all may recall, when we proposed cleanup and other policy changes that came from U.S. Council, one item was whether minors should be allowed in taverns with or, you know, accompanied by a parent or a guardian. We believe, and we're checking minutes, that you passed that as part of an overall update on policy changes relative to compressing license classifications and other issues. That was passed as well. Now, as Alderman Went raised this, we did find that he is correct. There was a Scrivener's error where in the final draft, the, there is a conflict where the new language was inserted, but the old language was not deleted. So that should be corrected, if that is what you want. Now, we also, as this was mentioned by Alderman Went, we started looking at this again. And we wonder if you may want to have additional discussion relative to whether this is an appropriate amendment. And again, we understand you are the policymakers. But we started thinking about whether all taverns in the city are appropriate for minors to, you know, be present in. So we wondered whether you would like to discuss that further, amend that provision, or delete it entirely and go back to the original language.
Anyone, counsel, Mr. Waldron?
I have a question, may seem a little offbeat, but it'll help me make a decision. What do we do for video gaming?
Well, though, so insofar as.
Minors.
K's.
No.
So they're always, well, they are not allowed in the video gaming area.
Right. But they can be in the food area.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Went.
But that becomes an issue, so.
Right.
Hafner's is probably the one where, I would have loved to have been able, when I was young, to go and get a tender loin with my uncles and, 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 but I couldn't because I was under 21. But if you go to Hafner's right now, they do have video gaming, but it's not cordoned off, it's not sectioned off. So the question would be, even though that place probably makes sense, that you might be able to bring a minor in, you would be prohibited unless they reconfigured their video gaming area, right? Is that the premise?
Right.
Okay. I kind of go back and forth, because I think Hafner's is a great example. But that probably makes sense, during the day, you want to go get a hamburger, you know. But I also have some concern of the poor, the, the, the bad parent or guardian that decides, hey, I want to go drinking and pulls their kid at 10 o'clock at night and says, hey, they're with me. They're not at the bar. Sit in the corner with your iPad and, and I'm going to start drinking. And so that's where I've got some concerns. I didn't make an amendment one way or another. But clearly, we can't pass this with conflicting language on it.
No.
Ms. Kostopoulos.
So I think that you raised two separate issues. We do have to amend the proposed ordinance to either strike the language, the existing language about prohibiting minors, or we have to strike the language which allows minors. So that would be the correcting the Scrivener's error. I think the other issue, as you very aptly stated, is, do you want to think more or discuss more or amend this ordinance further to make a, an additional decision about minors in taverns?
Mr. Timian.
Thank you, Your Honor. As someone who grew up at the F.O.E. Club in downtown Moline, it did not make me drink. If a parent is going to bring a child to the bar, they're also going to drink with them at home. So like, I don't know what behavior we're trying to correct for, or if it's really our role to do so. So I would say, let, you know, let the kids in with their parents. I don't think it's that big of a concern.
Mr. Moyer.
Thank you. So what would prevent a tavern from switching their license to a Class A, where they would be allowed to bring in a kid? It's like Hafner's serves food, they could be a restaurant, serves alcohol. We have others that do that.
So they would have to meet the restaurant license requirement, which of course would also include that, that the principal purpose is the sale of food versus alcohol. So it would be a license change with different requirements. Now, they may be perfectly able to meet either A or B, but that would not always be true.
So can I follow up?
Yes.
Thank you. So is this, are some of these taverns requesting that this change? Or is this just something that is generated here?
Ms., yes, go ahead, Ms. Kostopoulos. I thought the clerk could also answer.
Yeah, and maybe the clerk has additional information. It's my recollection, which may not be perfect, that this was raised in the course of looking at other communities alcohol ordinances. And that was often seen as something that council thought should be updated or changed in this revision.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Yeah. If we were going to allow this, I think that we need to add a provision in there that a bar could prohibit. They could post something that says, you can't bring kids in here because otherwise you've got the issue of people dragging in. And if they don't, or however they run their bar, they don't want kids there. Or if they've got slot machines in there, that now all of a sudden they're violating the slot ordinance or amusement ordinance. I think that there's some, some real issues here that need to be talked through and worked through. So I guess what I'll, what I'll do is, I'll make a motion that we strike the new language that allows it, but hope that staff will come back with some.
Middle ground.
Better information on how to do this.
Second.
Who's second to that, please? Mr. O'Brien? All right, further discussion on that at all? Mr. Schmidt?
Just as a point of clarification, if, if a, if we were to change this and allow a minor, would a tavern be able to simply just put aside that it's no one under 21 still? Or would they not be allowed to do that any longer?
Not without an ordinance reference. So Alderman Went is right, and we had talked about that option as well today, too.
Yeah, well, that's an easy choice.
Right.
That's why I was just like, this I can't.
Right, now, you know, we regularly update Chapter 4.
Maybe a couple weeks, they'll do it again.
Right.
All right, so I need to understand, your motion is, that has been seconded, that we're discussing is an amendment to strike the new language so that a minor is allowed.
Yeah, so strike for 3302(c).
Your Honor.
Yes?
The amendment is to revert back to the original.
Okay.
Code language with regard to minors in taverns.
That's much clearer from my perspective, but thank you for the clarification. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please, on this amendment.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams. Macias. Went. Timian. Moyer. O'Brien. Waldron. Eight ayes, no nays. And that motion passes.
All right, Mr. Went.
Yeah, so basically, in that same section within taverns, there was some discussion, and we've talked about it, and I guess Hafner's is another good example, that, you know, the principal purpose regarding how much income they make, you know, they make good hamburgers and, you know, that the idea, and I think staff tried to do this by crossing out the revenues derived from, so that you didn't get, you didn't lose your tavern license because you just happened to sell really good food. That it was going to be a comparison, principal versus video gaming. Was that the purpose of why you struck out the revenues derived from? Because I think that's what you put in your memo that you sent to me. But I'm not sure that that, because I think you do want the revenue derived from gaming, but not necessarily the revenue derived from food.
Margaret, I agree with that. And I believe that council said they don't care about food sales. So food sales are fine, so add those into liquor. It's the gaming comparison.
So how do we have to amend this to make it say what we want it to say?
I think striking that, we thought, did, because it showed a combination of the liquor and the food sales. Do you not think it does?
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
It definitely, I don't think it changed the meaning at all, in fact. I think it just, it actually, it made the sentence more concise, but did not change the meaning. Because we're still referring to food as an incidental, to food as incidental, which would then have the revenue of such being incidental. I think, I think we would just have to say the sale of liquor should be the principal tavern.
Well, can I suggest something?
I'm not making an amendment, I'm speaking out loud, yes.
So what?
Mr. Went.
If we put back in the revenue derived from, but cross out the sale of food and/or and offering of, and then just say, video gaming activity. So then it would be per se of tavern and the revenue derived from video gaming activity, if applicable, shall be incidental. But I don't know, that's on the fly.
But, Mr. Schmidt.
My, my concern, and I seem to recall something from the memo a few weeks ago, if we, if we do not include it as, to say that the food would be a principal purpose, it would automatically be considered incidental.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
And if we added that food and liquor together with a principal purpose, I think the question was, or the concern that had been raised was, would that be putting a kind of unfair advantage into a tavern license? And I don't know what the answer to that is. And thirdly, to go back and start to disagree with myself, as we think about that principle or incidental, we have now worked into the fact where the principal versus incidental would only trigger a review at a threshold. In which case that would, and that would put potentially some of the, some places that had high food revenues. But I think, so that would put that at the discretion of the liquor commissioner at that point. And I don't know that there really is any need to codify beyond that, because if we try and add food as a primary purpose of a tavern, it obfuscates.
Thank you. All right, so we don't, that was a question, discussion point. There's not an actual amendment on the table at the moment, correct?
It's definitely not right.
Well, this does not make a change, I don't believe. But I'm, but with our change to, to a multi-factor consideration based on a primary incidental, I don't believe that it changes as critical.
Okay. So is there any further discussion on Chapter 4? Mr. Went.
So on 43307a2, there's a provision, if you sell packaged liquor at a hotel, there's a provision says that you have to drink it off-site. there's a provision says that you have to drink it off-site. Either we need to put a provision that says, "Drinking in your room is considered off-site," or I- I- I'm not really sure.
Ms. Kostopoulos.
Right, so, we looked at that as well, and of course, uh, we are not, there is no suggestion, or was no suggestion-
Right, this is just how it is.
-for change. So, and we're not aware of any problems that arose in the past from this. But be that as it may, uh, we understand that while we're here doing cleanup, if we can clarify something, all the better. So, we do think that maybe we could add a sentence, um, to A2 in 4-3307. And so, a second sentence, uh, which says, "All premises includes the guest rooms of the Class F establishment."
So moved.
Second.
All right, the mo- well, who's making the motion? But I missed who that was. Mr. Went, and the second was?
Schmidt.
Schmidt.
Schmidt made the second.
James Patrick Schmidt. All right, discussion of that at all? Hearing none, roll call, please, to include the sentence defining off-premises.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Yeah.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion passes.
All right, any further, uh, discussion on Chapter Four? Mr. Went.
Yeah, for the definition of incidental, uh, I move to, uh, amend by adding the following at the end of the section. "In the event that the gross revenue of the secondary or incidental purpose of the business exceeds 50% of the gross revenue, yet is found by the liquor commissioner to be in compliance due to the aforementioned factors, such findings shall be documented in writing and filed with the city clerk, and a copy of such report shall be provided to the city council prior to the next regular meeting."
Is there a second? Hearing none, that motion fails for lack of a second. Any further conversation, uh, on Chapter Four?
Call the question.
All right, uh, process is, we take a vote on calling the question, and then we take the vote on the-
Second.
Or we keep, continue our discussion. Who was the second on calling the question? Excuse me?
There is no second.
Oh, there wasn't. I didn't hear one. So, Mr. O'Brien has called the question, is there a second? Okay, hearing none, we continue discussion. Mr. Went.
Under the ru- uh, renewal of licenses procedures, uh, I move to amend by adding at the end, the cap of F, uh, "The council shall be notified of such condition-" well, I guess maybe I'll- I'll frame this first. That there is a provision in here that we're allowed to give, um, licenses to convicted felons. I'm not suggesting that we remove that, I'm just saying that if that does happen, that we amend it to- to add, "The council shall be notified of such conditional license," uh, um, oh wait, sorry, "By adding, uh, 'In the event the liquor control commissioner issues a permit to an individual that has been convicted of a felony under the federal or state law, such findings of the commissioner shall be documented and filed with the city clerk, and a copy of such report shall be provided to the city council prior to the next regular meeting.'"
Second.
All right, that was motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Williams, is that the? All right, any discussion? Mr. Went.
The- the reason I'm doing these, I think, is for transparency. I mean, there- there has been a number of things, um, over the years, not, and I'm not saying anything of- of just the last two years, but since I've been on council, of things that have happened regarding, um, liquor licenses and those sorts of things, in which the council is not aware of, never heard, hears of, but we get told things in the community, and, uh, people ask us about it. And we have no idea, and there's no way for us to- to really know about it. I think for, as a transparency thing, if we're doing exceptions to the general rule, that it's not, um, it- it's appropriate that the council is aware of it.
Any, Mr. Schmidt?
I guess, I just, I, the idea that we don't have a way to find out about it doesn't hold water to me. And I think if there are, if a question is arisen, like any question that arises, with any work that is done by any- any member of the staff, any member, uh, another member of council, you go and seek out that information, and if you don't get it, you FOIA request it. And as far as I'm concerned, that's the process that should be in place.
Any further discussion? Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just, I understand that this is a, um, uh, weak mayor, strong council form of government. But I also know that our ordinances have placed the role of liquor commissioner with the mayor. And if we would like to revisit that and change that, I think that is a fair thing. But this is, uh, little carve-outs like this are just not something I want to get behind.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Macias?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, and I guess, is that any felony? What if, uh, I would imagine there could, there's probably bar owners all over the country that may have had some paths that had nothing to do with the line of business they're in, so, I don't- I don't know if you want to hold that against people.
Then you need to change our code, because that's what we're going to say.
Yeah, I don't know, it's just, uh, to me, it's a little too much, uh, to be asking.
Mr. Went, you had your hand raised?
I- I guess, if you don't feel comfortable with- with having a prohibition from felonies, that's fine, but make that, make that, uh, decision. The way that this is- is set up is that one individual can issue that license, and no one would ever know about it. There, I mean, to- to your point, there is a way to know about it, but how would I ever know to ask if there's, hey, unless you're asking every single week? Hey, did this happen? Did this happen? This happened? This is where to, in the s- the strong council, weak mayor, that there is just information that is provided to us. It doesn't mean that we're going to change anything. It's- it's the mayor's, uh, authority to do that. And there doesn't say that it has to be the advising consent of us, but the fact that if it happens, us being aware of it, I think, is part of good governance. When you have a situation when there is absolutely zero checks and balances, because you have no idea that it's happening, is the definition of bad governance.
I'd- I'd like to add that email and phone calls are still available to every single council member if they have questions. Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call, please, on this amendment.
Alderman Schmidt?
Nay.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Nay.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Nay.
Moyer?
Nay.
O'Brien?
Nay.
Waldron?
Nay.
Two ayes, six nays, and that motion fails.
Okay, any further discussion on Chapter Four? Mr. Went.
Yeah, one other quick question. I just want to verify that the ordinance says, for all K licenses, there's a 300-foot distance setback, and that we're enforcing that.
Yes. So, yes, it does say a 300-foot, um, you know, distance. We are addressing it going forward. So, I know that there is at least one establishment that was issued a license, I'm not sure how many years ago.
In 2018.
Which is not compliant with that, and we are addressing it every, you know, which is Friday.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further on Chapter Four? Hearing none, uh, roll call, please, for the, uh, motion as amended.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Nay.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Nay.
Waldron?
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays, and that motion passes. Council Bill 3026-2022, An Ordnance Amending Chapter Eight Buildings and Other Construction and Building Services of the Malin Code of Ordinances, Section 8-7202, Registration and Residential Rental Property, By Adding Amendments to Reflect the New Fee Structure As a Result of the 2022 Fee Review Effective January 1st, 2023.
Move to approve.
Motion by Alderman Went, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman O'Brien, discussion? Mr. Did I see a hand?
No.
No. Any further discussion? Mr. Went.
Yeah, I- I think, I just want to bring up the- the issue of how this fee schedule works, that large complexes that have 50-plus units, uh, are only paying $100 more than someplace that has five units, or- or, I think that's- that's close to that. I- I- I don't think that that's appropriate, or, or, I- I understand the fee to go out, but then there should prob- there should be a per-unit, um, uh, charge per that. But I wanted to hear what, uh, what other people think about that as well.
Mr. Moyer?
Thank you. So, I agree, there should be something like, you know, a $50, um, fee per property, and then something like, something small like a $10. You know, I don't know how it works out, but it, I- I don't understand the difference between going out for one property, costs about the same as going out for significantly more. Uh, if- if- if we're trying to reimburse staff for time, um, are they going to every unit and inspecting?
They're supposed to go to every unit and inspect it, no drive-bys.
Then the fee should reflect that.
Drive-bys should not be happening.
The fee should reflect that time.
I- I completely agree, and so, I don't know what that number looks like, but I guess what I'd like to do is, um, table this and direct staff to come back with a, uh, regime that has a flat fee plus per-unit cost, and come back with the number that, uh, that makes sense to, uh, make that fee neutral, uh, in the city.
Is there a second to table?
Yes.
Yes, by Alderman O'Brien. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams? Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes.
So, referred back to staff.
All right, we're on to the next item?
Okay, sorry. Make my note. Council Bill 3028-2022, An Ordnance Approving a Special Use Permit For Cannabis Dispensary Deep Roots LLC at 2727 Avenue of the Cities.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, second by Alderman Timian, any discussion? Hearing, he- oh, Mr. Waldron.
Thank you, Your Honor. I- I just want to emphasize again how much I'm against, uh, this ordinance for a couple reasons. First off, we have a developer here who's developed this property. They're supposed to do two phases, never has done them. We've made a special, special effort here to rezone, to allow them to develop this. I don't agree with spot rezoning, just to help somebody out. The socioeconomics of this are clear, this affects low-income folks, similar to video gaming, similar to cigarettes. I don't think it's something that we need in our community. And lastly, I think we're better than this. Just because it's allowable, just because it's allowable in the state, doesn't mean we need to do it. Our community, I believe, is better than this, and we do not need it. The revenue, sure, you can talk about bringing a revenue in, but we can talk about bringing revenue in for a lot of things. I just don't think this is something that Moline needs to be recognized with. I sit here and I listen to other council members talk about how we need not to have wires going across intersections, how this is just on a track to Moline. Or we need to do this, and we don't need to do this in Moline, we need to do ADUs, and we don't need to do ADUs. But, hear me out, this is not something we need to do, and I encourage you not to vote for this ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, to directly address the idea of spot rezoning, I think we did a cleanup. This property was included in the list of examples of why the district was drawn, how it was when you look back. What we did was not a spot rezon, but really fixing an error that was made at the time of original passage. And that's how I read that, and I think that's how I'd want to make sure that's represented. Second, I think that it is an important thing for Moline to stand up and to fight against the ongoing stigma and the ongoing criminalization that has continued, and the negative association often given to cannabis. And I think as we have a, um, we have an opportunity to stand up and say that this is us being forward-thinking, that we understand where the legalities are, we understand where the past prohibitions have gotten us and where they have been, and that, um, moving away from the black market is a positive step for our community and for the Quad Cities at large.
Mr. Waldron?
Wasn't going to bring this up, but since Alderman Schmidt dipped his toes, and I'll go down that road, too. It's clearly studies have shown that marijuana is a gateway drug. There's no question about it. Very few people start off with heroin or meth. They start off with marijuana, and then they transition into other drugs, illegal drugs. And studies show that, there's no doubt about it. And just think about that before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
I would just caution people that are getting into the cannabis business, and look at what this council is doing to K licenses when it comes to gaming. When gaming was made legal, everybody jumped on board, we couldn't get enough gaming in the city. Now, we have, going to have taverns and businesses, people that invested good money and took the faith with the council to pursue that gambling money, and now they're going to be shut down basically by this council. Same with marijuana, it's flavor of the month, everybody's going to want a piece, eventually the state will be involved. And maybe future councils will decide they're not going to want that rock in their city. They're not going to want, just because a vice is legal doesn't make it right. It's certainly not good. What's next? You can smoke pot and eat a burger inside a tavern while your dad's drinking a beer? It's not a good place. Common sense has to rule, and we're chasing money, and we're surrounding what morals the city used to have. I agree with Alderman Waldron, and I don't support this at all.
Thank you. Mr. Timian and Mr. Macias?
Thank you, Your Honor. As someone who lives a block from this property, um, I feel the most qualified to comment. I- I just want to, not, maybe not, but I'm the most affected by the location. I- I take exception with the socioeconomic statement. People of all socioeconomic statuses are purchasing legal cannabis. This is, you go to- go to Mile and you can see the line out the door. This is not just poor people. In fact, you could argue that with a 30% tax, poor people cannot afford it. Secondarily, uh, to conflate this with, uh, smoking pot while eating a burger, it's already legal to order shots and eat a burger and drink beer, which causes more crime than any other vice that is legal. So, I don't know why one is okay and the other isn't. So, I don't think it's a very valid argument against this. And I just, that's, that's where I want to leave that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Macias?
Yes, thank you. Um, I- I do want to point out that cannabis has been sold in Moline for decades. We just haven't gotten a piece of it. So, it's not, we're just, uh, basically, uh, formalizing it, and, uh, and- and we can actually do something positive about it, uh, as well. So, I would also recommend, uh, that we look at ways of, of, um, looking at the revenue that's generated to address some of those inequalities that happened with this war on drugs that really was lost. It- it's not just a Moline issue, it's an America issue. We have an addiction problem, whether it's heroin, whether it's drinking, whatever the case may be. This is an American problem. And by doing this, we're just basically, uh, acknowledging the issues that we might have. And, but there might be people who might recreationally want to buy marijuana, cannabis, and not necessarily have an addiction problem. So, uh, for that reason, I- I think we should move forward. But I would also like us to consider looking at ways of using some of that- consider looking at ways of using some of that revenue to address the issues that, um, were systematically in place, that have, uh, damaged black and brown communities for generations. Uh, that would be the right thing to do.
Agreed.
Thank you, Mister Went.
Uh, a- a- as I sit here, uh, one chair down from my for, former dare officer, uh, when I was in junior high, uh, I, um, I'm a little nervous talking in favor of this, uh, 'cause I, I don't want to ruin, uh, good memories, but, um, I, I don't disagree, and, and, and I think I'm probably closer to the middle. I, I think we're kidding ourselves if we think that there isn't, uh, externalities or negative effects by legalizing marijuana. I, I, I think that there are some positive effects as well, but there are certainly negative effects. I, I have good friends that went down this rabbit hole and were never productive people in society because they, they fell down this addictive road, that is true. But from my perspective, this is legal, it is being sold in our community, it is being used in our community, to the point, we might as well get the tax money to deal with the externalities. This is something that, um, you know, that if it's going to be happening, I think you're kidding yourself if you say, okay, no, but it goes one block in East Moline, or one block in Rock Island, that they're not gonna go buy it, and then all the things that you're talking about that your concerns are, they're still going to happen in Moline. And so, this is a way that we can control it, um, that we can gain some revenue, uh, Plan Commission has gone through this, they added a number of additional, uh, requirements, uh, traffic studies, all of those things to mitigate and limit the, uh, the effect to the neighborhood and how the traffic will flow in there, I trust that they did good work, and, uh, that, uh, once this goes in, uh, it will limit those, those issues to the neighborhood, uh, but, uh, um, if it is gonna happen, we might as well have the tax dollars to, to deal with the, uh, the impact in our community.
Mister Williams?
I agree with my former dare student, I would just take that exact same argument that you just made, and overlay it onto gaming, and that we would extract the same type of legal revenues from a vice that's been made legal by the state, that there's really no difference, if you're gonna sell your soul to the devil, you might as well get as much money for it as possible can.
Mister Went?
I, I guess, somewhat off-topic, but I, I think it needs to be addressed, I think that there is a, uh, difference of it being a ancillary thing to a bar or a restaurant versus being a, uh, place that is rented only specifically to drain money out of our community purely for, in a, in a game of chance, in which you will lose over time, it is guaranteed, it is, the, the way that it is set up, it is legally set up, that you will, if you play this long enough, you are going to lose money on it. That's different than it being an ancillary thing to a place where there's a restaurant, and it's entertainment and, and those sorts of things, so, I, I, I see a difference between those two things, and it's also, we're talking about one cannabis location versus what, we've got thirty-eight places that have, uh, gambling, I, I don't think that there is a, uh, any fear that that is going to go away overnight, uh, just if the K licenses wind up sunsetting.
All right, anything further related to this, um, item? Harry, none, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Nay.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Nay.
Six ayes, two nays, and that motion passes.
Thank you, next items.
Second reading ordinances, I'm sorry, resolutions is what I meant to say.
You meant not consent agenda resolutions?
Correct.
Thank you.
Right. Council Bill eleven sixty-eight dash twenty-two, resolution establishing the number of cannabis business establishments allowed in the city of Moline, Illinois.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Timian, discussion? Mister Went?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, the, the concept for this is to mirror what we're doing with the other ones, that says that when we get, uh, an application for it, the idea would be, we would increase it at that point, but not until then, that, so it's not as a right, okay?
Thank you.
The, the districts would stay.
Any, if there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Nay.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Nay.
Six ayes, two nays, and that motion passes. Council Bill eleven sixty-nine dash twenty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attester licensing agreement with Spring Valley Village Apartments Incorporated for use of right-of-way to install and maintain a portion of a detention pond located on property along the north side of Twelfth Avenue east of the intersection at Forty-first Street.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Alderman O'Brien, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Timian, discussion? Mister Went? Oh, sorry, Mister Waldron.
Are these guys required to have insurance to cover us in case something goes wrong? And, and we, we, we've already made sure they've got it? Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mister Went.
A question for the, uh, city engineers, do we see any issues, long-term, of widening road, turn lanes, any utilities, or anything else that might be affected by, by this, if we decide to bring the, uh, wires down from, uh, above, burying them, or anything like that?
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes, first reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty twenty-nine dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending Chapter Thirty-four, water and sewers of the Moline Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter Thirty-four in its entirety and acting in lieu thereof one new Chapter Thirty-four dealing with the same subject matter. Council Bill thirty thirty dash twenty-two, an ordinance aman, amending Chapter Twenty, motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix Ten thereof, no parking here at a corner, by including Third Street on the east side from Twelfth Avenue, south for a distance of thirty feet. And that is all I have this time, this evening.
Thank you very much, so we have miscellaneous business noting our time, uh, please be concise with your remarks, council, uh, I can be concise in, in telling you that this trip has been successful so far, as you know, I was invited by the city of Davenport to join a, a, the team of mayors, um, Ma, Ma, Mayor Mattson and Mayor Tomes, as well as their police chiefs, to advocate for, um, more federal resources for our law enforcement agencies, specifically ATF and, um, FBI, for the Quad Cities, that we are trying to, um, express the need for a new model, uh, to work as a, as a Quad City metro area, um, which would mean we require more resources, and, and that helps us, um, manage crime better. So, so far, so good, we've learned a lot of, about different programs, I'm very proud of our police department for having, um, take advantage of the cops grants that you all approved in the past, the safe, um, the school violence prevention program, there are, there are many, many more, um, and there's a great sense of cooperation among the, um, cities, and we're not leaving out Bettendorf or East Moline, they just were not able to be a part of, of the trip, but, um, had very good feedback with our senators today as well, um, Senator Grassley, and then both senators on the Illinois side, um, are, are very interested in this conversation and trying to make it possible. And tomorrow, we finish with, uh, Senator Ernst, so that is my update for tonight.
Mister Williams?
Uh, it was my honor as mayor pro tem to represent the mayor and this council and the marathon, and the police fight rodeo this past weekend, as well as starting tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
We didn't go, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Mister Williams. Mister Macias?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mister Went?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, uh, I, I wanted to, to comment, uh, Texan Parks talked earlier today about Cory Harrell being, uh, murdered, and, um, unfortunately, his life ended here at the parking lot at, at City Hall, and, um, I, I feel for his family that they have been going through this over the, the last four years, um, and, uh, as, as a community, as elected officials, that, uh, we make sure that we, um, while we can't solve the crime for them, that we provide empathy to them, to all victims of, of crime in our community, and, um, I, I have kind of been told that, uh, some people have been refuse, have refused to talk, or even to meet with them, and I think that we can do better as, as elected officials, not necessarily, again, that we're going to solve the crime, but that part of our job as leadership is to provide that empathy to those people who are, are victims in, in our community. Second thing, um, I'd like to move to direct staff to come back with, um, proposals on what the next steps would be to create a TIF along, uh, IA ninety-two, uh, Illinois ninety-two in Moline.
I'll second that. You found the only thing I would have seconded.
There's a motion and a second, however, um, Ms. Castopolis, can you address what is allowable in miscellaneous?
So, you know, we've been looking at this because over time, this, um, item has been used more and more for new ideas, um, direction in votes, which do not appear on the agenda. Now, I'm not saying that this violates OMA, but I do have concern that it, um, is not consistent with best practice. I am not aware of any community that I have worked with, or anyone in my firm has worked with, that I have, you know, spoken with, which is many at this point, um, who uses miscellaneous business in this manner, and that is because, you know, the whole idea of the OMA, and I know that you're all very sensitive to this, is to ensure transparency to the public, to each other, no surprises, and to allow staff to be prepared. When you make motions such as this, and I'm not commenting on the substance of the motion or the ideas, but it prevents the public from being, uh, aware that this topic might be addressed, it prevents the council from being fully prepared, and it certainly prevents staff from being prepared to give any input on this. So I really encourage you to, rather than address these issues in this manner, make them an agenda item and informational, use the process, other processes, uh, that are available. I would also say that depending on the issue and the motion, we could very well come close to OMA violations, and without notice of this, we have no opportunity to evaluate that. So again, especially when you're encumbering, uh, time, resources, money, that is not previously budgeted, or is not part of the strategic plan, which again, I'm not saying that this does that, this particular item, this only is my opportunity to speak to you about this. Again, those types of actions, when they do not appear on the agenda, can certainly give the perception of an OMA violation, and may very well be very close to that, depending on what they are. So I really encourage you to, and I know that you are very, um, you know, aggressive in your goals and, and your, um, activities, uh, but I would say, my best advice, best practice, slow it down, make it an agenda item, um, allow the public to be aware, allow yourselves to be, uh, better informed, and allow staff to give input on these types of items.
Mister Went?
Yeah, a couple of things, uh, one was, I, I think your predecessor from your firm was the one that had told us that this was the appropriate time to bring up new things, 'cause we had talked about it at some point, doing it during the cow, and, and those sorts of things, and as long as it was something that wasn't like a final action, but, but merely to direct staff to come back with additional information, or those sorts of things, that that, that this is the appropriate place to do that. Now, to your point about putting something on the, the agenda, what is the process for that? Because I sent an email last Sunday on a different item that specifically said, as we've discussed, please include this on an agenda, as an agenda item, on September twenty-seventh, and it wasn't done. And that's not the first time I've asked for things to be on the agenda, and so, if you could help me understand what that process is, because it seems to be a little selective on when it's included and when it's not, and why we're trying to stifle us actually having a, a conversation, uh, here and to, to get things done, that would be great.
I can explain one thing, I apologize for not being able to get to, to an email to you about it, but as you can see, our agenda was extremely full th- this week, and so that, that is the only reason that, um, your particular ask did not end up, um, on this agenda tonight. We're totally free to talk about it, I, I know you've had conversations with Mister Vitas about it, um, we, that, certainly open to that, so, uh, I can only address that particular item. Mister Timian?
Thank you.
Or Mister, Ms. Castopolis, and then Mister Timian.
So again, I'm not in any way saying that this process is a OMA violation, I'm only speaking to best practice.
Well, I, I feel it's, right after I made the motion, it, this wasn't like a planned thing of like, hey, we should have this discussion, it was just only after I made a motion, and Alderman O'Brien seconded it, that this was brought up, it's not germane to that particular discussion, it wasn't on the agenda, i- if this has been an issue that has been sitting out there for an extended period of time, then provide us a memo, let's talk about it, and, uh, as, as part of the process, but I, I think to do it in the middle of a motion that was made is inappropriate.
Ms. Castopolis?
So as I was saying, um, I, I bring this up now because it has been percolating, I have spoken to many members of my firm, including Julie Taffendorf, who I know that you respect. And, so that, again, no OMA violation, so I'm simply raising this now because the opportunity arose to, uh, talk about this with you, um, not, you know, to stifle your ideal, or your, you know, your initiative, merely to bring this up as something that council may want to consider. We would be happy to provide further information or analysis, I, I am raising it simply for consideration.
Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. I believe the city code actually says that any two aldermen can put something on the agenda. And I believe that's the correct mechanism. I copy Alderman Macias, and we both say, can we please put this on the agenda? And it will be done. And so, I think that that is the mechanism that, following our own code, we should do.
Mr. Schmidt? And then Mr. O'Brien?
I have a mechanism follow-up question. In the case where two aldermen are putting it on to the agenda, would that then trigger a staff review, or would then that be where we would need to provide the information that would be then brought forward? And, now granted, if it was a, you send us the first, this is the proposal, and if staff comes to me and says, hey, give me an extra week, and we'll add a recommend, I mean, if it initiates a process, but I also, I think there's a valid piece of this of people being aware, having the heads up. I mean, I agree, because there are times it's like, want time to wrap your head around it, and you cannot do that in miscellaneous business. And it's, we end up with this laundry list of things that might be good ideas without any priority. And I think that's, miscellaneous business has been the source of some of that creep for us, whereas if it kind of does get slowed down that one-week process, and, so, I mean, I, I hackle at it initially, at the suggestion, but I do also understand the merits, as I think, on the longer.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Will we vote on this? Because we're getting way far afield of what we, I seconded. This isn't anything I, I mean, we're not even talking about what was the motion that we made.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All right. Is this a roll call or an all-in-favor? Must be a roll call. Ms. Madam Clerk, can you tell me?
But we have to do it since you're remote.
We can.
Oh, yeah, that's correct. It's correct.
We can get consensus, however you'd like to do it, under miscellaneous.
No, it's roll call.
Because she's remote.
Well, I know, but this could be a consensus vote, because it's not on the agenda, I guess is what I'm saying.
Right.
I can do roll call, absolutely. Alderman Schmidt?
Nay.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Nay.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Keep in mind, we're not voting on what you're talking about, we're voting on 92. You know that, right?
I know what I'm voting on.
Okay, thank you. Aye.
Alderman Waldron? Four ayes and four nays. Your Honor, do you care to vote?
No.
Okay.
So...
So, what's any further miscellaneous, Mr. Went?
Yeah, so, to the point, I, the reason I think this is a good approach is because I wouldn't want a situation where Alderman Timian and I just start putting a ton of stuff on the agenda, because we want things. I think that this is a better gauge to say, hey, is there...
And because every other time he's made a motion, you guys have all voted for it. Every other time before this, before tonight, you guys have all voted for it.
That may, please don't interrupt. That may be the case, Mr. O'Brien, but if we're getting clarity about processes from our professional staff, that's all this is. I think that, just a reminder, anytime you want to do something on the agenda, it's really a great part of a process to talk to staff ahead of time, so they have an idea, and they can, you can bounce ideas off of them. That has, that is how other things have happened in the past, and that is a good process that I've talked with Mr. Vitas about. Any further miscellaneous, Mr. Went?
I have a question towards this item.
Okay, Mr. Waldron?
I think we're making a bigger deal of this than there needs to be, and it's the reason I hesitated on voting nay. If Alderman, Went, and I decided right now to put something on the next agenda concerning a creation of a TIF, is that appropriate?
Ms. Kostopoulos?
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
Alderman Timian said that if two aldermen come up and say, I would like to put this on the next agenda, couldn't Alderman and Went and I do that right now?
Yes.
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, okay, two other quick things. One, you guys got a list of things on the utility working group. This was a group that we formed last month, that's supposed to report back to us in November. Please take a look through it. I went through and looked at a couple of things. The wire that's going through the light at 1st Street is still there. The post by the Y that the Metronet was supposed to have brought their wire off of it is still there. Three months later, there's wire still sitting at the fancy Philly. Our code does not have any teeth for enforcement of anything. This is why this list is important, and to make sure that that working group comes back with an ordinance, suggestions that we can actually enforce, and we can improve our community. The final thing is, just to let you know, the issue with landscaping is, us not enforcing our landscaping code has now had another victim. Harbor Freight is coming in, they have rehabbed that building, and will not be responsible for doing any landscaping at the space. I appreciate Ryan is working hard to put together an ordinance that will go through the process, it'll have to go through Plan Commission, and if any indication on Plan Commission, that's going to take a very long time. ADUs got bumped another month, just so everybody knows about that. But in the interim, we could enforce our code that's on the books, that's been enforced for 10 years. So, I encourage the aldermen who voted against that to vote in favor of starting to enforce that in the interim, because otherwise, we're going to have more and more places where we miss the mark, and for 30 years now, there's not going to be any landscaping. So, and that's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Moyer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. O'Brien?
So, from this vote, do I understand that the aldermen that voted against this are not for a TIF, or of any kind, for doing anything with the I-92 corridor?
You should not understand that.
Well, why did you vote against it, then?
I voted against it because I was informed by legal counsel, it was an inappropriate time to make the motion.
But like I said, you voted with Mr. Went, when he's done that before, why wouldn't you do it tonight?
Because I was advised by council not to.
I can solve that advice.
All right.
I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Waldron?
Your Honor, I've had extensive conversations with Alderman Went, and I would like to see on the next agenda about a creation of a TIF down on Route 92.
Thank you.
How's that?
I would encourage you both, I would encourage you both to speak with Ryan Veeloke and Administrator Vitas about that exact topic, in preparation for that being on the agenda. Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Vitas?
I would love to say nothing, but I just wanted to, because I'm beat. Look, it's almost, I got, let's see, 40 seconds, so I'm going to make, I'm going to take just 15. Just want everybody to realize that we have been working diligently with Adam Simon, with Ansel Blank, and with Dave Talbot with CTC, to try and bring closure to the negotiations with Metronet. And we waited for several weeks, almost a little more than a month, just to get some hard numbers back in terms of what it would cost for the dark fiber, which that kicks it into high gear. So, we now know what they're looking for, and what we need to do is, we need to further refine what it is we need, very carefully, because the city has dark fiber in different places through Geneseo. So, there's history here, there are locations, there is a deep dive in terms of what exactly it is we want, where we need it, because I do not want to duplicate or replicate equipment, wire, or for that matter, cost. So, that's where we're at, and I just want you to know that, you know, it's still moving forward. Okay? That's all I...
Thank you. Any other staff?
Yeah.
All right. Any further public comment this evening? Seeing none, don't believe we have executive session, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Second by, I have to do a roll call, everyone, because I'm online. Roll call, I missed who the second was, Madam Clerk.
That was Alderman Moyer.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.